Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, March 8th, 2023. I call this meeting to order, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Kemp, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we please call the roll?
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner McCocken.
Here.
Commissioner Prescott Lefler.
Mr. President.
Vice Chair Posgro.
Here.
Here. Thank you. We have no special orders of business. The minutes from the regular Planning Commission meeting of February 22nd, 20...should be...that's the typo. It should be 2023. Does anybody have any comments or a motion?
Who would be approved? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's a six-zero. Is there any members of the public here wishing to speak on any item that is not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on. No consent calendar items. Public hearings. Our public hearing, item 8A for zoning amendment 22-366, zoning permit streamlining. Do we have a staff report?
Good evening. Planning Chair Commissioners Christopher Wright, Associate Planner II. This is a continued public hearing from January for zoning amendments to zoning permit procedures. This was initiated by the City Council with a request to get some ideas from staff on ways to improve our permit process, zoning permit process specifically. And a list of ideas were presented to them, of which the City Council supported and direct staff to initiate this project. At one point, the planning staff had also spoken with Planning Commission. We got input, and then in January, we came before you, and the item was continued so that we had the opportunity to meet with each Planning Commissioner and describe the issues in more detail and get questions answered, provide more additional time for you to go through the materials. There's three types of amendments that are proposed. First, to clarify, procedures in the code. So describing the process, updating, making sure that the format is easy to read, consolidating applications, specifically Planning Commission applications, where there's some similarities, but maintaining what we're reviewing, and then streamlining non-controversial-type projects based upon experience and defined criteria. After we discuss each of these, we're going to pause and have time for questions so that we can have an interactive discussion, and then close with our recommendation. So first, the strategy for clarification changes is to update tables in the zoning code. We have some tables that don't completely address all our zoning applications, and we're just making sure that those are complete, and we're adding references in those tables so that it's easy for the public to link the table to another section of the code. And that's just to make it easier to read. So that same thing with improving wording and format. The objective is that the public can easily get information about, say, what the development management team does at the staff level before you go to a Planning Commission meeting. And then updating the review authority if streamlining ideas are pursued. We need to make sure everything's consistent in the code. So that's another type of change that's involved here. Here's a slide that gives you an example. Where there's a table, and it describes our permits and what the review authority is, so who makes the decision. And then we add this column here, process levels, where we have a section added, and it describes the types of levels of review and the steps in that process, like a flow chart, so that the public can understand how the process works. And you could see that there's a row, administrative development permit, where that's not covered in the table, but it is a type of permit that we have. So we're trying to make it complete and accurate. With that, are there any questions on those types of changes, which I do want to note are a good amount of the pages that are provided to you?
Check this slide out.
So I'm going to chime in real quick if I could, too. So we definitely heard from the prior meeting and from conversations with each of you in between on a number of concerns. We tried to break up this presentation specifically. So as you might remember, the bubbles from a couple slides ago, three buckets. So tonight, I want to sequentially work through those buckets. I did not hear a significant amount of concern regarding clarification. And to be clear, on this slide that you see right now, there's a couple of items that show a change in the review authority. That would only go into play if the streamlined elements come into effect. We're going to discuss the streamlined elements later, and that's where we did hear elements of concern and questions from both Commissioners and from the public. This first bucket, clarify, is only saying that we're going to update the tables as appropriate within the zoning code. So the table here, this is not going to change the review authority. This will just reflect, at the end of the day, any streamlined initiatives that are approved would be reflected in this table appropriately. The only thing that is being conveyed here is that we...some applications in the past, there wasn't a clear delineation of who is that authority, what's the process. So the table in the future will just be very clear about every application that comes in. Here's the path that you will be following. But we'll get to...the streamlining bucket is a later slide. So when we get to that slide, there will be plenty of time for the discussion on specifically, who is the review authority? We'll focus the discussion on that specific part of this effort under that streamlining header. Does that help clarify where we are right now?
So there's going to be overlap, is what you're saying?
There will be some overlap. This table will be updated accordingly. So the things that you see currently, those are placeholders, but that...this here is not going to change the review authority. We'll get to that in the streamlining section of the discussion later.
So what I'm hearing is that as we battle through the streamlining stuff, that'll ultimately be properly reflected back in these tables and so forth?
Absolutely.
But it'll hopefully be easier for the user to find and follow how to do it in the code?
Correct. So bucket one is just to try to make it...make our code more visible and easier to navigate for our customers that are applying for any application through the city.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Posgro, do you have a suggestion?
Yes. I wanted to float this by the staff and my colleagues. Since tonight, it's a large packet, highly technical, and we have just a couple members of the public who are rich in history in the city. I'm wondering if it might make sense to go through Mr. Wright's presentation with maybe minimal questions. It's like if we're just like, can you clarify that point, without maybe stopping and trying to drain all our questions at this time. Hear from our two stakeholders, then kind of come back to Mr. Wright, and then we, as a group, can start to have a more...kind of a more detailed conversation to go through this section, each section in detail. That way, I think we have continuity in the conversation versus chopping it up with trying to, you know, go through, drain all the questions at this point. I think there's just so many topics to discuss. It might be better to just hear the overview, hear from our stakeholders that are gracious enough to give their time to us tonight, and then we can take our time to really just kind of go through it, you know, maybe even led by Christopher or whatever, or our chairman, you know, section by section type of thing. But that's just a thought. I'll put it out to the...for comment.
That sounds fine to me. Does anybody have any...staff?
Looking at different buckets.
Well, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So would we do that for each bucket? Or are you talking about just dump everything?
I think what he's saying is, for the most part, let's try and let staff get through it, big picture, and then later we can drill down on the wordsmithing and item by item and all that stuff. That's what I'm hearing.
Yes, we formatted the presentation to be more high-level with the intent that we would try to feel questions to inform, maybe help the public understand at a high level. And any questions that you have that will be helpful to, like, consider public testimony and then get into more detail after that. So yes, we agree. And we just...we put pauses in here so that we can get through it. So even at this stage, you might come up with something that you want to ask right away.
Okay. So I certainly don't want to shut down if there's any burning issues or questions that people have along the way, but that generally sounds good to me. Assuming that's acceptable to staff?
Absolutely. Chris, if you can go ahead and proceed.
Okay. Thank you.
The next set of changes are consolidation, where we have six types of public hearing applications that would be consolidated into two. Applications have similar findings that the Planning Commission or the zoning administrator needs to make to approve a project. Oftentimes, well, I'll get to that in a second, we would be maintaining what we're reviewing. So we are continuing to review projects according to the general plan, the design guidelines, the zoning regulations, Secretary of Interior standards, compatibility with adjacent properties and so forth. We would not be changing that. It's a matter of how you package up the permits. And the overall goal here is that the public would have less confusion on what to apply for. It would be more intuitive what permit applies. And that same goes for staff. When you have new staff, it's easier to understand the process. There's less work that's involved for an applicant to submit an application, as well for staff to prepare the packets that go before you often. Sometimes we find ourselves writing extra with not a lot of different substance that goes into it because the findings are similar. That every minute that we spend at a staff level writing is one less minute that we have to review the next project. And that's kind of our broader view of streamlining is, we want to maximize the amount of time that we have at staff to do a good job for the community. So part of that is to also simplify the code and submittals. We try to improve the way that these applications are formatted so it's easy to understand. Lastly, with the cultural heritage permit, it would be focused on historic properties because there's unique findings for those, the Secretary of Interior standards. So first, for the development permit that's proposed, it would combine the site plan permit, minor site plan permit, architectural permit, and minor architectural permit. These permits have similar findings for, like, compatibility with adjacent properties, architectural guidelines, so like Spanish colonial revival architecture, if it's in the downtown. Is it of a scale that's appropriate? Is it consistent with the general plan, zoning ordinance? And that would just be packaged under...within the umbrella of a development permit. It doesn't change what we're reviewing. And it doesn't...this, again, is different than streamlining. This is just the name of the application and how it's formatted and so on. For the cultural heritage permit, it would be also the site plan permits, but also the cultural heritage permit. And it would be focused on historic structures. Sometimes we get comments at the counter how they're a little confused why the cultural heritage permit would apply to not a historic building in the architectural overlay. Like intuitively, people will say, well, I thought culture heritage means historic buildings. This would apply to historic buildings. For these other instances, you would get the development permit, like if it's in the architectural overlay.
So real quick, so it would...the cultural permit would only be for the historic building, not for the building next door to the historic building?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Because the findings are different for the historic building compared to the building next to the historic building. Next to the historic building, it's, are you compatible with the historic building, the adjacent historic building? Whereas the historic building is, do you meet the Secretary of Interior standards for historic buildings? It's a much different context. So here's an example. On the left, it's the architectural permit findings that we have today. You're going to see that there's mention of the general plan. There's some duplication there on, like, materials and colors and heights, and that really is duplicative of the design guidelines. The design guidelines talk about those aspects, or the zoning ordinance when it comes to Spanish colonial revival. Say that you need Spanish colonial revival if you're in the architectural overlay. Is it in character with the neighborhood, and is it compatible with adjacent properties? All of those elements are in the proposed draft, like on the right. You're going to see all those elements are still covered. General plan, zoning ordinance, design guidelines, compatible with adjacent properties. But their findings are more consolidated. Also, this on the right showing you the development permit, it's...I don't have the site plan permit findings on here, but they're similar, right? So it covers the scope of these permits in the same way, without having to rewrite something three or four times. Is it compatible with the general plan? Yes. Is it compatible with the general plan? So we would say it one time, instead of multiple times.
Quick question. Is boilerplate that are pasted in when they are the same finding?
We often will write a finding, and it will tie to the general plan, and yeah, we'll copy and paste it. And that takes time, and you're reading more to make the same decision. So that's one of the benefits of doing this. Any questions on that bucket of changes?
On projects that want to be fast-tracked, coming in and they want their site plan determined first. Then, how's that going to process?
We would have to...
We can't piecemeal development projects, so we can't break them up and sequence the permits. They have to be permitted all at once.
So the development permit would apply to, say, if you wanted to do a subdivision...let's say you want to do a subdivision and record it and sell off the properties. That's a tentative map. But if you're doing the tentative map and the development, then you would need the development permit and the tentative map. That's how it would work. So it depends on what people apply for, what they're proposing. Any other questions for now?
Do you have a similar slide on findings for the cultural heritage permit, or is it the same?
I don't. The difference is the Secretary of Interior standards.
Yeah.
So if you wanted to see how those differ, I could point you to a page, or if I could do that later.
Later, fine. Thanks. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
But we haven't changed those findings for the cultural heritage permit, have we?
Correct. No. We still say Secretary of Interior standards. If anything, we mentioned character to finding features in the findings. So we can show you what those look like. Okay. So then... So, it depends on what people apply for, what they're proposing. Any other questions for now?
Do you have a similar slide on findings for the cultural heritage permit, or is it the same?
I don't. The difference is the Secretary of Interior Standards.
Yeah.
So, if you wanted to see how those differ, I could point you to a page, or if I could do that later.
Later, fine, thanks.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
But we haven't changed those findings for the cultural heritage permit, have we?
Correct, no. We still say Secretary of Interior Standards. If anything, we mentioned character to finding features and the findings. So, we can, we can show you what those look like. Okay. So, the next bucket is streamlining. The first note here is that the streamlining ideas before you are to reduce decision levels if it, the expectation is that the projects are non-controversial. The level of public concern or potential impacts for that type of proposal are not expected to be significant enough to rise to a higher level of review. And the ideas that were generated are based upon experience of processing applications, going to the zoning administrator and seeing the response to that application or the level of impacts that we see consistently. So, these ideas came about through experience and discussions with the planning commission or the zoning administrator at times. Maintaining consistency with the general plan, again, we are not changing what we are looking at. We continue to look at the policies in the general plan and all the implementation documents that go along with it to inform decision-making. And then, lastly, there'd be not only the existing options, but additional options built into the draft ordinance to refer projects to a higher level. So, if, say for example, the city planner found that a project may be of significant concern, it could be bumped up to the zoning administrator. Or if the zoning administrator saw something of concern to rise it to another level, it could be bumped up to the planning commission or city council. And there's additional options built into the draft ordinance than there are today. So, the implementation of this is there's three types of streamlining. First, there's these general procedures that I could just cover with this bullet. So, the one example is that there are unique situations where the city council may get, know a project is being submitted, where they want to say expedite the review of that project and have it directly come to them. Instead of going to the planning commission first, there may be some unique circumstance. Right now, the code doesn't explicitly say that can be done. This would say that that can be done. And that's an example. Another one is inactive applications. We've found that our process for projects that just sit around because the applicant doesn't get back to us, it's not working. It can be exploited where someone, it takes a long time. And if they can work within the code that we have to just continue to stall the project, and that's not the intent of that code, it's to make sure projects continue to move. And the, the changes that are proposed would give the applicant a fair process to re-submit their application, but also make sure that this city staff resources are being used appropriately so that they stay on track. For administrative development permits, I have a slide that I can get into next, but we have some streamlining dealing with those, as well as adjusting the levels of review for certain types of projects. Attachment two in your report gets into detail on all these items, but we can get into more detail after the public testimony. Just want to mention that. For this, we're just trying to give you a high-level summary. For administrative permits, what we're trying to do here is update the type of staff-level approvals to follow state law where we need to be objective. So, that means replacing findings with standards, where we're more checking the boxes. And if you meet those standards, you can get approval versus more of a subjective finding that we make, like the type of projects that go before you where we're making findings. Broader categories of projects, like we have one that's pretty broad, that staff can interpret on whether we have the authority to approve a project. We would be replacing that with a defined list of projects and the criteria that you have to meet in order to be eligible for approval. And that's to be more objective as well. And then, lastly, to improve transparency, we're, and removing staff discretion. So, we are proposing that the record of staff's decisions, instead of just going to the planning commission, it would also go to the city council in their next available packet. So that the public and the city council also has a streamlined ability to call up a project if there's something of concern. And the public could contact the city council if they have an item of concern. So, here's the administrative permits. And items on the left that compare the current process to the proposed process. First, review criteria, sorry, review criteria. We have general findings that involve interpretation, and we want to get away from that and have more objective guidelines. And that's a state requirement when you have ministerial-type projects where staff is making a decision. Conditions of approval right now can be applied to what's called a staff waiver. That's the current type of staff approval. We would not be able to approve conditions of approval anymore. They would have to be built into the project, and they either meet the standards or they don't. If they don't meet the standards, staff would not be able to approve a permit. And that's just how it is at the building permit, for example. You either meet the building code or you don't. You don't apply special rules outside the building code. Eligible project categories, instead of having broad categories, it'd be specific with criteria. If you don't meet the criteria, you don't get a permit. City planner can refer projects to a higher level. You could continue to do that, no change. Design review subcommittee, no change. City planners, we'd continue to be able to refer projects to the designer review subcommittee before making a decision. And then, as I mentioned, for transparency, decisions would be in the city council and the planning commission packets versus just the planning commission packets. So that the information is distributed quicker and there's less of a gap between the public appeal period and the time in which the city council's making a review of staff's decisions. And that concludes part on admin permits. We broke it up into the types of streamlining. Is there any questions on administrative permits? Not getting into the stream, like what we're reviewing, but our approach for making staff approvals objective, not discretionary, having a defined list of what we can approve, and then routing information to the city council. That's, that's what this bucket's about.
Anybody have any questions on that?
I don't know. I just, your comment that I guess an application for an applicant can request to go around the planning commission and straight to the city council, is that a process that's open to applicants right now?
No.
You mentioned somewhere, something along those lines. What, can you clarify what you're talking about there?
Yeah, when I was talking about the general procedure type of streamlining before this, is there are some times where the city council knows a project is submitted and they want to see it right away. Right now, it may, the code says, has to go to the planning commission and then the city council. We are putting, what we propose in the draft, is that the city council, if they want by majority vote, they could vote to look at that project right away.
Can they render a decision?
They could render a decision. They could also, if they want, they can say, we, you know, in the process of deliberating the project, no, we want to go back to the planning commission before we make the decision, if they wanted to. But the standard process would be the same. It would be to go to the planning commission and then the city council. It'd be more of like special circumstance. And other cities have that built into the code. It's not unique. But it's not in our code right now.
The council could currently do that?
They cannot. They cannot do that now.
So, we're looking to allow them to do that?
Yes.
And just to clarify, so that's a project that's already been reviewed or going to be reviewed by planning commission?
No. So, if the city council know, let's, I'm just being hypothetical here, okay? Let's say the city council, they know of a.
Hey, Chris, can I jump in for a sec?
Okay.
Sorry. I think of it like memorial care, right? If councils like, hey, this, we know this is going to come to us anyway, it's going to get appealed, you know, why slow them down and make them go through planning commission? We just want to get our arms, get to it and get our arms around it as fast as possible, you know, or Amazon. Like, they could just, you know, kind of steamroll through and go straight to it.
That's a good word.
Steamrolls the primary word.
My personal opinion is, I don't think they would want to do it very much because I think they value the planning commission process and they respect, you know, our questions and.
Certainly across in cities. We're a big city, but there are ones where councils can run amok. And it can happen.
That's absolutely true, but if it's being controversial, it's going to go up to them anyway, and then they'll just run amok slower.
Well, then they have.
They're avoiding the planning commission review that way.
Right, that's true. Yes.
Is that specific, is that specifically in this packet we're, that's in front of us to approve?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you want, I can show you the page, maybe if you'd like, after the public comments.
Thank you.
If you want to look at that.
So, it would mean that you've already gone through your planning process, but then they waive just the planning commission hearing?
Yes. It would still go to staff, and we would look at it technically and prepare a staff report. It would, the way that that would probably work is, it would go before to the city council, and they would make a decision on whether they want to review it right away, and staff would get direction. Actually, no, let me back that up. They would know that the application was submitted, and then they would agendize discussing it and make a vote on whether to hear it right away. And then, after staff's review, it would go to the city council. That's probably how it would work.
One less hearing for the public to be aware of the project coming to the council.
At least one.
At least one. And has it, has this, this issue is germane with the state? State code allows it?
I'll let Mal.
In terms of, you know, people's property rights and?
Yes, the answer there is yes. The city council is technically the planning body of the city. They have delegated that authority to the planning commission. There are some cities where there are no planning commissions, right? And every application goes to the council. The council is free to bring that authority back to itself, which is what would be happening here. So, yes, they can always bypass the planning commission. They could eliminate the planning commission if they so chose, under the government code. So, this is, this is entirely in line with the government code.
Do you know of any litigation? Has there ever been any litigation for a city that's dissolved their planning commission?
No, because there are, there are dozens of cities that don't have planning commissions. It's fairly typical. I mean, there are cities in Orange County that don't have planning commissions. Typically, with a smaller city, there won't be a planning commission. I shouldn't say typically, but often with a smaller city, there isn't a planning commission. Things just go straight to the council. Again, the government code provides that the council is the planning agency, if you will, the planning body. They can delegate that authority if they choose to a planning commission, but that's directly in line with state law. If there was litigation, it just wouldn't go anywhere because the state is very clear on that.
You know, since they can do it anyways, I really don't think we should put it in the, in the guidelines. Let them do it.
This is, this is, this is how they would do it.
Right.
Right? So, they can choose to bring that authority back to themselves, but without, without doing something like this, the council can't do that because they've created the planning commission. So, this is the method by which they would do it here in San Clemente.
Yeah, I have a little bit of a concern because if there's an interest on the council, they can bypass objections and have it come right to them, like memorial care.
Yeah, let's, I would suggest, let's not get bogged down on this one. Let's add it to the list of things to chew through later.
It is, I'm crimping the page.
But with that said, as we're going down this journey, if I am bringing that up right now, would it have been circled back to? So, I think it's good to point that out. Let's get that up at the top and then move on. I'm cool with moving on, but we need to point the little nuggets out that I'm hearing. I'm hearing nuggets in there that I don't like.
And, and that's the planning commission's purview. If your recommendation is not to do an item, then we will take your direction and adjust accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
So, the, the next bucket are adjusting the levels of review. As I noted in attachment two, it gets into detail on situations where a type of project may be currently heard at the planning commission, and a staff has, well, the city council supported reducing it to the zoning administrator when they reviewed that list. And that is detailed in that attachment. What we've done here is simplified that table for us to return to. Or if you want to like call up an item right now and ask a particular question, we can do that, but you know, our, our recommendation is to make this more of a reference slide to come back to, where we can pull items that you want to go over. We, we did that so that we can facilitate the discussion later.
Can you leave that up for a sec, please?
Yes.
Can you go back?
Yes.
Yeah, was that, was that summary in our, that's not in our packet, is it?
It's attachment two. This is a.
Well, I know, but the summary is.
That's not, no.
It's a summary of our.
It's really great.
Summary of the summary.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, maybe, if I could, just maybe highlight a couple here. So, number six, row six, if, just to restate it, maybe in English language, easier, non-planning technical terms, if there's a new home or duplex that is across the street from a historic building, today, that comes to the planning commission with this proposal, it would not. It would go to the zoning administrator.
Correct.
Now, the question I have on top of that, what about public notice? Is there public notice that there is a hearing at the zoning administrator?
Yes.
And that public notice is on the historic property?
It's.
Or mean on the property that's across the street?
Yes.
Okay.
There's parameters that staff has to follow to notice the public, that, and that would remain.
Including mailings in a certain radius.
Yes, and it doesn't vary by application.
So, that still stands. You're just making it one less hop at the end.
Yeah, we're just changing the hop.
Actually, you're changing the flow from a public hearing at the planning commission to, I assume, a public hearing with the ZA.
Correct.
Okay.
It's just what the public hearing is.
Does that reduce your paperwork? Is the paperwork less for a ZA public hearing than a PC public hearing?
It's less, and staff is expected to review a zoning administrator-type application in less time.
I see.
It's, I think it's eight weeks versus 14 weeks from the date that it's a complete application. So, it's expected to be a faster process.
The turnaround time is faster.
Because, for the reason why it's proposed as a streamlining item, those items that go to zoning administrator are considered to be of less significant potential concern and impacts. And we proposed, this is one of the ideas to council, because there would be, I think when I calculated, it would be at least 80 feet of separation between the historic building and a proposed home. So, there would not be, staff does not see likeliness of issues with massing. If there are things regarding architecture, we would have those built into the new administrative development permit with all the guidelines that were put into that, into the draft before you.
I think my question was, is it's eight weeks for you to review if it goes to zoning administrator, or 14 weeks for a planning commission? Is the process less or something? It's same permit, right?
Yes, no, it's, it's the same.
Same permit.
Process, but a different hearing. Less writing, it's, it is, it's less work to go to the zoning administrator. Less writing, it's, it is, it's less work to go to the zoning administrator.
For one, you know, we only meet on a defined schedule and they have to get the packets out in advance and then set the schedule of what cycle we're going to be on. So there's natural delay just in that kind of scheduling.
Yeah, I understand that.
So I'll just add one comment to that as well, a clear line item. If you look at, on the city's website, you can see any of the past Planning Commission reports or zoning administrator reports. The zoning administrator reports are more straight to the point. There's a little bit less of the code context, et cetera, that goes into those because for your Planning Commission reports, we need to provide all of that surrounding detail. Zoning administrator reports are reviewed by the community development director. So Cecilia has as the acting Z.A., all of that context in the background. I don't have to be careful about plant, like how I describe some of those context elements as much. So we're able to produce those reports much more quickly than the Planning Commission reports. What Chris was mentioning, as well as in this, that specific example, it's a development that's across the street. So if it was an immediately adjacent property, we might be doing line of sight studies to see, you know, what's the curve of that street and how does the massing in architecture come into play with that immediately adjacent historic property? In this specific, I'm only talking about that one line item that's here, but in that case, when it's across the street, some of those elements that we would be looking at in the staff review process wouldn't come into play. Like, we're not, a line of sight study is not going to be as relevant when it's not an adjacent building, for instance. So some of the elements reviewed in a Planning Commission report, when it is adjacent, wouldn't necessarily come into play for this type of a review.
I understand, great explanation.
Can I, did you want to keep going? Go ahead. I just wanted to say, I have a little more clarification. So if a project is going to be shifted to the Z.A., which previously would have gone to Planning Commission, that doesn't have any impact on the noticing, the public noticing?
No.
Same radius map, same timeframe? Okay.
Public noticing requirements are uniform in San Clemente, in all cities.
That's good. Then the next, I just want to highlight the next, the next one is row seven. So again, new development can be up to four units. Now, what this is suggesting is any, any new development up to four units that's within 120 feet, and that change is a reduction of the current 300 feet. And then I guess the two parcels adjacent next door would have, stays the same. So what's happening here is you're reducing the radius of where a new project near a historical building pulls a permit. Instead of 300 feet, it's 120 across the street, basically. And then the same thing as line six goes to the Z.A. Is that...
Yes, for a public hearing, but staff is not proposing to eliminate 300 feet. Where it would be broken up into two tiers. This tier, public hearing type of projects that are, it's closer to the historic building.
Mm-hmm.
So if it's closer to the historic building, then that's still a public hearing. If it's further from the historic building, so up to 300 feet, then that would be potentially a staff approval if it meets the criteria. Again, it's like a check the box. If you don't meet the boxes, it's not going to staff.
Okay, so let me restate that. So what this does is us, the summary doesn't really capture that, that bifurcation, which is you're going to have, if it's within 120 feet, publicly noticed, just like before...
Yes.
Goes to the Z.A. If it is between 120 and 300, you're still going to flag it, but it won't be a public hearing, won't go to the Z.A., staff.
Correct.
Okay. And the idea there is because it's a little further than 120 across the street, so you're like measuring, like you're trying to say, I guess if I put, again, layman's terms, if I just said you're trying, I'm trying to get at your intent. If it's directly across the street, yes, we want public notice and Z.A. If it's more diagonally from the property, for, you know, up, you know, beyond 120 feet, but and up to 300, then we still want to look at, we still want the staff to look at it, but no public hearing, no public hearing.
Correct. And 120, so in a context, I'll, not saying that all lots fit this, but per the zoning code, lots are supposed to be a minimum of 60 feet wide. Lot of times in San Clemente West, the freeway, lots are about 45 feet wide, right? So for context, it's more than across the street. It's going to be at least like, in this case, it says at least two parcels. So the idea is that it's not a budding. It's not directly across the street. It's removed from the historic building.
Quick clarification. In your example, from 121 to 300 feet, staff approval, but staff, or staff review and potentially approval, but only if it meets all the checkboxes.
Correct.
Right? So if it doesn't meet the checkboxes, you're not approving it and you're kicking it up to the Z.A. or to the Planning Commission or whatever.
Correct.
Got it.
Anything else?
I just want to go back to what we were previously talking about, real quick, about the difference between Planning Commission report and Z.A. report. I don't like to use that as an argument for doing it because they aren't just for the Planning Commission. They're also for the public to learn about the project. They're also, these staff reports are great documentations of a project for future new hire planners to review and see what was thought about, what was important, et cetera. Because I think earlier on you said experience and whatnot tells us that, you know, some things we can do, some things we don't. That only works on with a staff that's experienced. So somehow we, I don't think we should make a change just because it's efficient for staff on it, because these are learning documents for future planners. They're for the public to learn about a project, find out what was of concern and what's being studied and implemented. So I just want to make sure that we don't think the report for the Z.A. is being presented to a very competent individual, that the whole story's not being told.
May I address that? Because I've written both. I've written both. May I address that?
Oh, I know. And I've read your reports for both.
Yeah, and so the zoning administrators still, we're keeping in mind, as the staff person presenting to the zoning administrator, I have to inform the decision. So I still have to provide the substance in order for them to make an informed decision, but the format is different. They're like bullets and the bullet, it's the, the material is still presented, it's just, it's less writing. It's not...
I totally understand that, but the publics also should have access to these and be able to understand them without the education. I mean, you're one of our most experienced planners. So you have done that. A new hire may not do that. Because they're still learning. There's a learning curve.
Okay, all right, thanks. Any other questions before we move on to public?
He said the notice won't change, but if we change, like from 300 feet, somebody who's 300 feet from a historical, you know, home to like 150 feet, although there's still notice for the 150 feet, we have removed 150 feet's worth of diameter of notice.
That's correct.
So I just want to make that clarification.
That's correct.
I would say if that's a concern, jot it down, we'll hone in on it later.
Because the question was asked, and they said there's no change in notice, but it can happen the other way around because you change your radius, you have reduced your notice. There still is notice, but you have reduced your area of notice.
And we could, you know, as an idea potentially is, still require the notice for staff review, say, okay, have until such a date to get comments in, and if staff member receives a bunch of comments, hopefully they say, hey, I better kick this up to Z.A. or Planning Commission.
I know that, but in code, if you reduce it from 300 to 150 feet, the, there still is notice at 150 feet, but they are eliminating notice of the other 150 feet radius.
Right, yeah. The way it's written right now.
The answer to the question was partially correct.
Within 120.
A small piece of circumference instead of a large piece of circumference.
There can be a reduction in notice because you've changed the code.
Yeah, the question was, is there any difference between noticing for a Z.A. hearing and noticing for a Planning Commission?
If they're changing it to a Z.A. and it's going from 300 to 150...
Yeah, that's a different question, different question.
Well, not if it's a change in the code, which is included in the...
Oh, yeah, but what I wanted to put down on was, if it goes to Z.A., there's no less number of days for noticing. Process is the same. You're still, the public is still getting the same notice. That was a concern.
And I would say, yes, as long as in the streamlining, they're not changing the boundaries, because the Z.A. will do what the boundaries say. So if, at the same time, there's no change in zone and notice going from Z.A., that's true. If we're not changing the municipal code on, say, like, from 300 feet to...
So it can be...
Can I, can I address that? So I think that there's a distinction here. I want to make sure that's clear, is it depends on the level of view change. So if it's still a public hearing, there's public notice. There's limited situations where the proposed ordinance removes a public hearing. That's the time where there wouldn't be public notice. So the context is different. If it's going from Planning Commission to zoning administrator, still public notice. If it's going from, say, Planning Commission or zoning administrator to staff, that's when there wouldn't be public notice. It just depends upon what the streamlining item is.
Does anybody else have anything they want to highlight on this page of items?
Are we going to review the summary that this is going to? Because I think there are just some typos in all of it. Like on item six? We talked about setbacks.
And the more expanded attachment?
Yes, do you want to get into that now or do you want to...
Well, it all depends. That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
I think we come back to it. I think we come back to it.
Yeah, let's get through that.
Okay.
Let's get through this.
Okay.
Yeah, so leave that there for a second, please, so we can absorb it. Wait, no, 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 we already did the next, the next, there you go.
Page 214.
Does anybody want to bring up any questions about any of these?
Is it time to hammer out each one of these things?
Well, I think, I think, I think, I think if you have a...
We're getting through it. We're hammering it.
Yeah, but if you, but, well, here's my opinion. And I'm open to discussion. If you have issues with any of these, I think we should probably at least put them on the table, like, hey, I am concerned about 11 and 12 or 13 and 14, and then we'll come back and beat it up.
Sure, the seven or six of us, we can have an issue with every single one of them.
Right, okay, so we'll beat it up later.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, Christopher.
What, can you...
Next slide, please.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we went over the questions. So the recommendation is to find the project as exempt from CEQA, California Environmental Equality Act, and adopt a resolution recommending city council adoption of the proposed amendments. And that concludes staff presentation.
All three buckets?
Those are the buckets. That's all.
Thank you very much. Yeah, Mal, can we can open the public hearing now, right? Okay. So I'll now open the public hearing. I see two members of the public here who, as discussed, are very senior and experienced and knowledgeable stakeholders. Given the complexity of the issue, I think we should afford each of the speakers five minutes of time instead of the normal three. Is that easy to account for? Okay, awesome. My first speaker card, Larry Culbertson. Larry will be followed by Wayne Eggleston. And then staff, if we, following the public comments, if we can read any letters that we've received.
Good evening. Larry Culbertson, Historical Society. As Commissioner Camp said right from the beginning, this is extremely technical and after studying very much, I'm starting to get a little bit of a grasp on it, but it's so complicated. Listening to Chris Wright makes it a lot more understandable. A lot of it that I've heard I like, but some of it I detest. So one thing that bothered me, just a small point, you keep referring to guidelines. I went last week or week and a half ago to the objective design standards. It's another thing that's going to be coming your way, and I don't quite understand. It seems to me that what you're talking about are standards, not guidelines. Isn't that what you want to get away from? You want, you want standards? So let me start out with a part of this that I like the least. The proposed amendment would slash 300-foot radius zone, zone of protection around historic resources down to 120 feet. It's very troubling. The purpose of that protective zone is not just the direct effect on the resource. It is to ensure the architectural look and feel of the neighborhood. That's written in the, in the purpose of the cultural heritage permit. It's to preserve and strengthen San Clemente's historic identity as a Spanish village. The number of projects affected each year by this change would be small, but the effect would be very perceptible. The administrative development permit, replacing the required findings, finding standards and objective general, with objective, general and specific standards would undermine the development review process. The result would be a throwback to the vile architecture of the 1960s and 70s. Planning commissioners like you have worked hard to achieve high-quality architecture and landscape that we now enjoy. They did this through the discretionary review process, not through objective design standards. As far as the public hearings, under the proposed amendment, fewer projects that now go to public hearings would do so. Staff claims they would use discretion and just direct any potentially controversial projects to you, but with the new improved objective design standards, would you be able to do anything? Would your hands be tied? The claim that including a record of staff approvals in the city council packets provides transparency and public oversight is not accurate. The public deserves and must have full disclosure and the ability to influence projects that might affect them. As far as the environmental review, staff sort of grazed right over that. Staff recommends that the amendment not be considered a project as defined by state CEQA guidelines. They claim there's no possibility that the amendments would result in a significant effect on the environment. We disagree. This proposal is an enormous change to our zoning code and would most certainly result in adverse effects to our historic resources. Full environmental review must be done. The streamlining project is only aimed at amending zoning code. Staff may be looking in the wrong direction. Our code, our planning department and the Planning Commission are functioning just fine. The alleged slowdown in the process may well be coming from other departments and they, and, in the way that they work or don't work together. Jim Holloway had a letter that in the packet, I hope you all read that, he made some very good points. Additional training regarding the planning process for all city departments, retain a noise consultant, better three-way communication between planning, engineering and applicants. A lot of good points that he made there. So please let the city council know that our permitting process does not need a major overhaul, and with respect to historic preservation, it's working just fine. Thank you.
You're the only one. Uh, as you may know, I was on city council for 12 long years and four years on the planning commission and, and design review. And we had a number of streamlinings during that period of time. And we found out several very important things. Streamlining is fine, but the fundamentals are, are, is the planning staff itself. Are they experienced? Are they incentivized? Are they long-term? That's important, and I'm not saying that we don't have that here right now, but that's fundamental before you talk about streamlining. It's so important. Streamlining does not always work because of lack of public notice and lack of public hearings. Two most important resources we have in San Clemente right now are our historic resources and our coastal resources. When I was on the city council, we had a historic preservation officer. Great, we don't have that now, unfortunately. This went by the wayside. In 1995, myself and a lady by the name of Ray La Force introduced the Mills Act here in California, in, in, in San Clemente, and Jim Petches at that time took off and ran with it. Thank, thank you, Jim Petches. But I don't think, at this point, we really have, for example, the 10-year review that we should be having with our historic resources when we approve a, a Mills Act. Our other important resource is the coastal resources. We need a coastal resources officer on staff, and of course, this is a city council decision, but it needs to be stated now. Why? Because of our standard replenishment, and, and a few years from now, we're going to have, we're not going to have the coastal commission making decisions, we are going to be making decisions. Here's a wonderful example why streamlining does not always work. And I want to thank Cecilia, because she's been very, very cooperative in this one issue, just to say the least. We've talked about it a number of times. After I got off the planning commission, by accident, I found that a, that a, a city planner, a city planner approved coastal development in concept, in concept, and sent it to the pla, and sent it to, to the coastal commission. This was a 7,000-square-foot, single-family home in a coastal canyon, in a coastal canyon. I fainted. And informed my neighbors on both sides of the canyon where I live, we raised thousands of dollars and got a attorney, who in fact was a coastal resources attorney. Thirty of us went down to San Diego to the coastal commission hearing. Coastal commission rejected it at 12 to 0. Um, and they, and they said, it's in a coastal canyon. The whole, whole point of this was that this, the staff member, who's no longer here, said, well, this wasn't in a coastal canyon. Hello, it is in a coastal canyon. And so when you leave out, and there was no notice to the public, there was no public hearing, we were, we were dumbfounded by this. And this involves dozens of homes that are on either side of the canyon. These are very expensive homes, but this was a single-family, 7,000-square-foot, single-family home in a coastal canyon. No public hearings, no notification. Public notice is important, transparency, public involvement is the cornerstone of our democracy here. Neighborhood property rights, which we were just talking about, 120 feet versus 300 feet, neighborhood property rights are at stake. I, I suggest that you continue to work with staff in each of these items. This section here, 17.12.020, is important, um, because it says here, and they still have coastal review in concept by a city planner. That needs to be changed. And this other thing down here is short-term apartment rentals. Is that vacation rentals? If that's vacation rentals, that's a process one. Process one is a, is a staff member. All the times we've ever had public hearings and this, this controversy with vacation rentals, this needs not to be going just to a staff member, and I could be wrong about this, but if, if, if this is only, vacation rentals are only approved by a staff member, that's wrong. It needs to go through the process, it needs to go through public hearings. Vacation rentals are extremely disruptive. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Um, I think there was reference to one or more letters.
Thank you, Chairman Cannon. I did receive a written letter from Commissioner Prescott Lefler requesting that I read this aloud, so I'm going to go ahead and do that now. And, and I'm going to begin with the portion after her brief comments to me that are just Two areas that cause my concern, and I would prefer not to be included in the recommendations by staff for streamlining. One, regarding cultural heritage permit, quote, "Reducing the distance in which a public hearing is required," end quote, "from 300 feet to 120 feet. Elimination of public notice, in my opinion, any reduction in opportunities for the public to share their comments is not good governance. A well-informed public should always be our goal, even if this takes extra due diligence by staff." Number two, reducing level of review of new accessory buildings under 500 square feet. We are in a small town which has the potential of becoming increasingly more congested. What we can review, we should, in order to preserve the Spanish village by the sea, which I might add is stated on our city seal above the council chambers. Each state legislation session reduces our local control, and we should not give this up in advance." And that concludes the, the comments.
Okay, that, that was the only written comment you received.
Correct, that's the only written comment I received.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Davis, did you have, uh, some sort of a...
Yep, I have something to say real quick. Larry, Wayne, thank you guys very much for being here. You're the only ones representing the general public out there, and I appreciate that. I'd like to take this time to address the staff, the residents in, in attendance, and anybody watching on TV, fellow commissioners, and hopefully some city council members are watching now, or will review this before they have any further dialogue regarding this. Good evening. First of all, I'd like to take the time to, to thank staff for preparing such a, a comprehensive packet. You did a great job, um, going through many municipal codes that seemingly have the opportunity to be modified and help streamline permitting processes. I see how these changes could significantly reduce the workload on city staff, which is a good thing in certain ways. However, getting rid of any oversight by commissions and committees or city council, for me, is something to be very cautious and slow to make a decision on. I don't believe that all the proposed changes to the municipal code would be good for the city of, the city or the residents of San Clemente. This is a very serious task. We are literally proposing changes to the municipal code. I understand the spirit of what is being proposed. I just don't know that the changes in their entirety is healthy for the city. In my opinion, we need to raise permit fees to accommodate more staff, to be able to handle the workload that is required in preparing for these oversight commissions and committees and their packets, including the city council. It is not unnoticed that preparing packets that are initiated by the oversight requires, that requirements in municipal code is a heavy task on staff. It is important to allow these volunteer commissions and committees to have oversight and the ability to protect the value of the city of San Clemente with all residents. I know in the past, there have been many changes to the code that were approved at a particular moment in time. You fast forward 10 to 20 years down the road, or more, they were interpreted in a different light than in which they were intended for. Having respect for the, the city of San Clemente, the residents, and to all those that have served before me, I need to be extremely cautious about every word proposed. Simple words, as in should and shall, have drastically different meaning. It is not unrecognized that changes can be made to help expedite permitting. Again, I thank the staff for putting in the effort, acknowledge, and it's acknowledged and appreciated. Reading responses from the public and my own experience, I'm convinced it is extremely important that we get this right and not rush to approve or deny. I look forward to diving into the proposed changes deeper and hearing from staff and listening to what my fellow commissioners have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner. Does anybody else have anything they want to say, maybe at a high level, before we dig into details? I guess I'd look to staff to see, um, do you have any suggestions on how we dig into the details beyond just starting item by item as, as we raise them?
Yeah, I think that, um, going back to the thought of the presentation is, there's three buckets, and I think that, uh, we can probably work through the first two fairly quickly. And then I, I do recommend, uh, we already saw that as soon as we brought up the slides that really hone in on the summary from attachment two, that there are a number of, um, items from those lists that the commissioners are interested in. So I, I think that we could pretty quickly address the, the clarification. Is there an interest from the, the planning commission in making sure that that section of our code is refreshed? Number two, is there support generally for consolidation? And then I think if we're generally supportive of those two items, that it would make sense to dive into these two tables and address one by one any of those item numbers that there are concerns with.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure. I want your suggestions.
Yeah. I think what Jonathan, I think you're suggesting, we kind of go through these slides again, right? I think that's great. I would like to also go through the redlining where we are changing the code. So that would be table 17 dot 16 dot 095. It would be table 17 dot 12 dot 0 dot 20. And there might be another one that I've missed, but, uh, that's where the, the details, oh, yeah, 17, 16, 100. Just to make sure we are comfortable with the code changes. And we just, and if they're, if they're clear and there's no issue, we should just move on. But I've gone through here, and I think a lot of the, I see some wording changes that I think in the code could be clarifying, and I don't think we can get to that unless we go through it. And then, as Mr. Eggersen pointed out, there could be some things in here that are things we should discuss. So that would be a, something I'd like to do when, go through, after this.
Yeah, I, I think that we, I think each of us has a lot of detail...
Yeah.
...that we want to go through, so we're going to have to get there, but, um, Commissioner Kemp?
Yeah, question. Would it be possible for us to, during this, this discussion, and ultimately as a, as a, I guess, resolution, to break this apart so that we could approve, um, let's say, the clarification bucket? And not necessarily, and/or, you know, the first two buckets, and not the third bucket tonight, so that we can maybe accomplish something to get us a little further down the road? Um, I don't know if that's even a possibility.
I think, I think it's all, I think certainly the clarification bucket is dependent on the streamlining bucket.
They're all co-mingled, that's the problem.
Yeah, I mean, I think kind of conceptually, we can, we can agree to it, but the, the detail of the, ultimately, the clarification tables and all that is going to have to be back-referenced to what gets decided in the streamlining component.
So really, the only way we're going to come to a conclusion tonight is if we agree on some form of streamlining.
Well, well, we, first of all, continuance is on the table.
Oh, I know that.
You know, so, I mean, um, relative to, let, let's take bucket number one first, clarification. Is there, are you just asking us, are we in, in agreement that we like the concept of clarifying tables and more information about what process and this and that, if we're on board with that? Is that basically the question?
That is basically the question.
Okay, and it's not, and there's nothing more than that specific that, you know, you, you see in there?
No, there's a, a table that was in that first section that showed, um, you know, some modifications. Let's go back to that briefly, Christopher, thank you. And as I mentioned, I, I think that the focus of, the meat of the discussion will be the attachment two, and the, the tables that list those changes, one through 17. And, and this table here aligns with what the, you know, the current recommendation of staff is, but based off of any commission discussion regarding that table, these, this section will be retroactively, um, modified accordingly. Uh, so, so I think that we should think of this first section of clarification as not being something that is, is, uh, changing our code. I think we were working backwards from that attachment two. Here are the, the changes that are proposed. As Commissioner Cosgrove mentioned, we can dive further into those details of the specific edits, the redlines that are referenced in that table. Uh, but ultimately, the, the recommendations that come of that, come out of that discussion will be reflected in this clarification piece. So I, I don't foresee a, a whole lot of controversy within this section. Uh, the, the second portion was consolidation, um, and there, that might be worth, um, some more, more specific discussion. But I do think that, uh, it, it may even be best to not necessarily go through the full presentation, but to start at those two tables that we know we have some discussion items on, address any code-related items, the tables, et cetera, that Commissioner Cosgrove has mentioned. Um, and again, staff can take that direction to proactively address the clarification items. Christopher, do you, am I summarizing that fairly?
Yes, I, I just add that with this table, I think what could be helpful is if you have questions on why these items were proposed by staff, to, to get a sense of why they were seen as options for streamlining, that could be helpful. And then going into the redline or attachment two for even more detail, but the idea here was that you pull items that you have more concerns with or want to get into more detail, and maybe it's all of them or some of them, but, um, you know, to start the discussion with these two tables, I think could be helpful.
Yeah, I think the best thing is eat this thing one page at a time, right? Just hit this number three, hit it. And then we keep going through, and if we only get through 40% of these pages tonight, but we get those dialed in, so everybody's comfortable and adjustment's made, then we, we hit the next 40. But you have to start at the beginning, you have to go line by line, hammer it out so it gets behind us. Hammer it out so it gets behind us. That's the only way to hammer this out.
Okay.
You can't just do it as one bulk big, over-the-fence hit. You got to base-hit this thing, just little by little.
I would like to just summarize this for the general public. What the staff is proposing is a new framework for permits. So they're proposing things go away and new permits be replaced. So they're taking, like, four permits, site plan permit, minor site plan permit, architectural permit, and minor architectural permit, and combine those into a development permit. I don't think any one of us are trying to, um, argue against that framework. Underpinning the framework, though, this combining of these permits is the detail, which is where we want to go. Because underpinning this is all the language that defines that, and one of the goals is to make sure that language is clear. And there's many ti, I think all of us would probably have a few suggestions on language to clarify. The other underpinning element of this is the decision-making authority. Is it planning commission? Is it the zoning administrator, or is it staff? And I think, you know, the only way we actually get in there is we go, good, check, check, let's talk about this one. That's what I, that's what I'm thinking we're at. The next one, uh, underpinning this framework, is the public notice process. So again, each one of these, we have to go through, yes, that's public notice, that one is, oh, that one's not, are we okay with that? And then the third, and, or the fourth thing is, there are rules and standards now being proposed for these permit types. And I think, you know, the only way we actually get in there is we go, good, check, check, let's talk about this one. That's what I, that's what I'm thinking we're at. The next one, underpinning this framework, is the public notice process. So again, each one of these, we have to go through, yes, that's public notice, that one is, oh, that one's not, are we okay with that? And then the third, or the fourth thing is, there are rules and standards now being proposed for these permit types, especially for the ones that are gonna be approved by staff and no longer publicly reviewed. Here's a checklist, if it meets the checklist, give it the approval. So we need to be comfortable that that checklist or those standards work. These, for all the, what I would consider these elements is our job, to go through these and feel that it protects the city and our citizens before we just, before we give any recommendation to the council, so that we feel comfortable that we've done our job. And that if the council enacts our recommendations, that it's gonna be, it's gonna make sense. So in order to do that, we're gonna have to just take this elephant one bite at a time, and we'll just have to gauge our stamina. Do the, I think so far, we're doing really well, and we'll just have to just look at the staff, help us, guide us through these, and let's go as far as we can go, and then call the ball and continue it if we need to, or if we get through it, cool. That, that's what I'm summarizing, what I think we're at.
That sounds fine with me.
Okay.
I just have one question before we then just start on page one, which is regarding council and the direction that council gave staff regarding this, and to the extent that they reviewed, you know, these areas, did these items for potential streamlining, 3 through whatever, did council review those and kind of sign off on, hey, yeah, these, these look good, or did they just kind of give direction to staff, dig into the code, see where you think we can streamline without eviscerating it?
I can answer that question. So the council did not have this level of detail in front of them when they directed staff to make changes to the code. The council was aware that staff had a parking lot of recommendations that we've come across in working with the code and processing applications that we, we knew we were gonna get to, once we got through some of the other things that we were working on, like the specific plan updates and the housing element update and the local coastal program certification. The council was eager for staff to get those zoning code changes done sooner rather than later. But this level of specificity was not identified for them when they considered this request.
Okay, thank you. So would, would the commissioner, my fellow commissioners prefer to go through, start with Attachment 2 and these kind of levels, or on page one of the proposed zoning?
Attachment 2, let's just dive in.
Okay.
So, the only thing is, if you do Attachment 2, like line 3, is all the information specific to that piled in one area in this packet, or we're gonna flip, 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 flip?
Well, I-
You know what I mean? Because if we, if we go page 1 through 100 numerically, it's different than if we hit this, number 3, 4, 5, because if we have to chase, go to page 3, go to page 8, go to page 18, let's go to page 29.
This is a summary, Attachment 2 is a summary. It's not, the tables that I refer to is everything. So you can go through the summary and miss stuff that we will catch only by going through the table. So one option is use this as a guide, but actually just jump into the table and just go through the tables. Because when you're done with the table, you've actually gone through it at all.
The, the only, the nice thing about going through the summary is that it kind of, it does summarize it and gets it into different categories, you know?
Yep, whatever you, whatever you guys want. I mean, I don't know, Jonathan, I have one of you.
My, I guess I'm looking for Commissioner Crandall's wisdom here.
The way it works for me is using our summary sheet, not the one up here. We have been directed to page G11 of the redlines. That is all the supplemental information you need for each one of these items. So if we start with the summary, and we have a concern, go straight to the page for the redline, and that'll give you all the information you need to what is, what details that line item. So I'd say we just go 1 through 17 on the summary.
Okay.
And anytime we have a question, we'll go straight to that redline page that Chris has highlighted for us, and that's where we find the information.
Yeah, and then I think that if we discuss, we might say, hey, we just don't like what's going on with numbers 3 and number 4, we want to tweak it back to 300 feet, and number 5, we want to do public noticing, then staff can, you know, readjust the minutia of the thing. That's, that's my impression. Okay. So with that, item number one, so would staff like to lead us through that, or do you want me to, I guess?
I was trying to, if you don't mind me, pull up a document here.
And if anybody at any time wants to have a break, let me know.
Just so the public can see what we're discussing, I want to put it on the screen.
Put it on the screen.
Yeah. And I know it'll be a little smaller on here, but it's, it's something.
That should be fine, because we've got the page right in front of us.
But this way, the public can follow along.
Okay, so you want to go row by row? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I would say item 1, and then just maybe hit the general description and then the proposed changes. And if we have questions, we'll go back and compare it to the existing.
Okay, so row number 1 involves the ability to refer items to a higher level. So the city planner could refer to the zoning administrator or planning commission. Currently, just city planner can refer to the zoning administrator. So it would now be another level if they see a greater need to, say, get in front of the camera or, you know, another level of oversight. The zoning administrator would be able to now refer things to the planning commission, or zoning administrator, the planning commission or city council. Currently, it's just the planning commission. So the zoning minister could refer things also to the city council by these changes.
Christopher, can I?
Yes.
So, item 1, G11, that we're supposed to be looking at?
Yes.
So I do believe there is a transposition issue here, so we, there's a change in the attachment order, and so I believe that we're actually gonna be looking at D9, is gonna be the accurate redline page, so if-
As we go along, can you-
I'll call, yes, correct, I'll call those out as we go. So the first item, D9, is gonna be what we're referencing here for 17 12 0 6 0, decision process.
So instead of G11, it's D9?
D, is it D? Yeah, that's the redline.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, 17 12 60. What? D9.
Okay, so Oliver's flipping their pages. Cecilia, how are we doing on getting a city planner? What's the progress on that?
Well, so Adam Matamian- Adam Matamian is the city planner, but because our code compliance manager position is vacant, he is filling that role, and we are working on hiring a new code compliance manager. When that process is complete, then Adam will be moving back over to oversee the planning division as the city planner.
So is he doing double duty, or is he?
He is not doing double duty, he is devoted to code compliance, and we have Jonathan Lightfoot, who is, who has stepped in and is overseeing the planning division. That's why you've seen Jonathan at the last couple of planning commission meetings and not Adam, because Jonathan is the one that is overseeing the day-to-day operations. And he's doing a great job.
We thought it was because Adam didn't like us. Okay, well, I'd suggest, over on the far right on the summary, let's talk about these things one by one. Item 1, under proposed changes, the city planner may refer items to the zoning administrator or the planning commission. Do we, are we okay with that? Or, right now, he can only refer to the ZA, but now he could refer straight to the planning commission. Are we okay with that?
So, go ahead, Park.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
So it used to go to the ZA only, but now it could go to the planning commission? Isn't that reverse of what we're doing here?
Well, this one, yes, he could, he could go-
That is reversed.
He could bump straight to the planning commission and bypass the ZA, it sounds like.
I'll comment really quickly on that, just to clarify. I understand your question. So Cecilia fills, fills that role as a ZA, but when the code's referencing a zoning administrator, right now, we would have to wait until the next zoning administrator meeting, put that onto the agenda, then formally have that person, have the ZA refer it. So Cecilia is also in the office daily with the city planner, now he could just, he or she could have that conversation that day and make that determination to refer it instead of waiting for that procedural step.
Bypass referral.
Correct.
So it's faster.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm, can we just take a drop, Paul? I'm okay with that.
Yes.
Okay, see a bunch of thumbs up. Okay, item number 2, the ZA may refer items to the planning commission. On, on Attachment 2, the big pages, the big summary pages.
You're at number 2?
Well, the first, the first block, so item number 1, the first block, on the far right-
Yeah, yeah.
-under proposed changes.
Yeah.
Number 2.
Oh, thank you.
The ZA may refer items to the planning commission or council, which, right now, they can only refer to the planning commission. So do we want to give the ZA the power to bypass planning commission?
No.
I say no.
Okay.
No.
Okay, thumbs down.
Yeah.
But, anybody, I'm looking for people to speak up if they have significant objections, so. So we don't like that idea, we want it to go to the planning commission. And then, the planning commission may refer items to the city council. Jonathan, what's the thought there, just like, yeah, what's the thought there? It just gives us the option to send it on to them?
Correct, it just gives the option, in some ways, I mean, clearly acting on it, they already have that option within our existing code, they can always call something up or appeal something. I guess in theory, it would give you the option if you know that there is, you know, a specific question or a political area of concern on some subject that you wanted to defer directly to the council, it would give you that option if you didn't want to act on an item. But again, any item that the planning commission acts on is appealable, and the council can call that up.
So we're not currently able to do that?
No, not currently.
Who can appeal, the applicant?
Anybody can appeal, oh.
No, it's gonna have to be the code we can appeal, because some things are not appealable. So can everybody appeal, the applicant, the zoning administrator, the planning commission, the city council?
So typically, within our existing code provisions, there, there's a separate section, appeals of an action. Currently, that would typically be any member of the public, but if it's a member of the public or the applicant, there's a fee associated with appeals of an action. The city council, clearly, there's no fee tied to that, and they can appeal that directly. There are references in other sections about that, those appeals provisions, so.
The one planning commission can pull it up?
Cecilia, would you be able to address that?
Well, that's kind of not it, that's not in this section.
Well, but it's in, when you go to G, if you really want to read the Bible, you gotta read G9. You gotta read G if you're-
I think we'll get to the different processes later, because-
I think we need to get to them.
Maybe we just talk about appeals now, and just, that's fine, you know, we could probably talk about appeals.
I think you dive deep into everything now, because there's no coming back.
Well, so I'm okay with that, but I just want to make sure it's logical, the processes, are they kind of part, they're not really part of Attachment 2, are they?
The appeal process, is that in Attachment 2?
No, it's not.
I didn't think so. It's not in there.
No, because we're not proposing changes.
Well, Dr. McCacken brought up-
It's in here.
Process 1, not the appeals process. Well, the appeals process of process 1, everybody.
Right.
Referrals to higher review level on G9F.
Yes, that, that's the redline of the changes that's proposed, so if you want to look at-
G9 or D9?
D9.
Say G9.
G, what the council will look at to approve as new code.
Yeah, staff would suggest looking at D, it's where you actually see the changes in the code.
When I ask my question?
Okay.
Look at G9F, 1, the city planner may refer process 1 decisions to the zoning administrator or planning commission, depending on level of public concern anticipated, for matter if decisions are referred to the zoning administrator or planning commission, the public area, and the law. And number 2, the zoning administrator refer process 2s, but nowhere does it say the public unless there's another area, it just talks about appealability in general, that the applicant can appeal, or it doesn't say anything about the planning commissioner can appeal, if he hears about what the zoning administrator did, or if a council member can appeal it. I know in most cities, a council member can appeal any planning commission decision.
So to address that stat, the ordinance, the ordinance before you does not propose changes to the appeals process.
So if that's the whole thing in appeals, where does it say that the applicant could appeal a zoning administrator decision?
The, the current appeals process, we could look at the section if you like, it allows a member of the public to appeal within 10 days.
Hey, show me G, where it is.
G, okay.
Yeah, so I'm gonna jump in real quick, so I think just to clarify, this section that we're looking at allows, it sets a standard for who's gonna review it, but in some cases, that review body, so this, this doesn't, wouldn't affect the public at all in this section, that review body can elevate it to a higher level review if they are seeing that there are public comments or, or causes for concern in that item. The recommendation in front of you isn't recommending changes to the appeals process, that's a separate consideration, that's in our existing code section 17 12 140, that's not in your packet, because there's no proposed changes to that, and I can provide a summary of that, but we're, what's in front of you is just escalations, it's not an appeal.
Thank you, Jonathan.
You kind of need to know that background to know what we're changing.
Um, I, I-
We need to see 17 12.
So all the, all the sections that would be amended by the ordinance were copied into the redline, so that you could see the changes that would be made by the ordinance. We try to give you context so you can make an informed decision, so where there was a number of changes to a section, we included the whole section.
Can I just make it off the cuff? How come we don't have a municipal code in front of us, like the full municipal code? It's not a funny question, because when I was on the planning commission, the city down, we each had-
A binder?
The whole code. No, the whole code. So that they said, look at 17, like you're telling me to look at whatever? I mean-
That, that's relatively new that we don't, Wayne will attest to this, when we went on, when I joined the planning commission, we were given three boxes of ring binders.
Wow.
We had, we had the Vision San Clemente, we had the general plan, we had the, all the master plans, a bicycle master plan, everything. We had the historic guidelines, and I've got three boxes of ring binders with all that. And I assume it died out when personnel started changing over. But it is, but boy, I can find it quicker, I think, than most people can in online. Yeah, my binder. Because you can be looking at multiple pages simultaneously, and it's awful hard on a screen to find multiple pages when you shrink them down, so. But I'll say, on this item 3 we're discussing now, the planning commission may refer items to the city council. I've never seen it happen. It seems like a coward's way out. If we can't take the-
That's what we're here for.
You know, buckle our belt and say, we're gonna make a decision and make a recommendation, let's start and we'll do it, and it can be appealed up. But I would, I don't think I'd ever vote for moving something along to city council without making a recommendation on it. without making a recommendation on it.
That's our job.
It seems like a funny thing.
Our job, that's what we do.
Okay.
It has to be unanimous, though.
So I have, yeah, it sounds like we don't like number three, but I wanna, I wanna jump back to what Dr. McCacken's talking about. I apologize. I think we're conflating the two ways to do this. One, I, I like the concept of going through the attachment, but then, I think later, we're gonna need to go through and read, you know, what's process one, what's process two, what's process three. The summary doesn't really talk about process one, talk about process two, that's a little bit more big picture. I think we go through this, the summary, line by line, like we're doing, and then we go through the whole thing line by line.
Sure.
And when we, when we're going through the whole thing, we'll be able to skip sections 'cause we already discussed it in the summary stage, but then we're gonna go back and see, okay, the process one is, what was that again? And stuff like that. Sorry, Mel, I see the grimace on your face.
If we cross it off, then there won't be any point in reviewing the details.
Exactly, yeah. So are we good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Can I just, I would like to make sure that we do circle back to appeals, I, 'cause I would like to put that on the floor at some point. If we decide to go with the framework and push things down to staff, at, like, let's say we decide, yeah, we're gonna let the Z A do more stuff.
Right.
I think what we need to do is change our appeal process so that we request staff, all Z A decisions are in our packet, and we have the right to call that up at any, at any time.
That might not be changing, it might already be there, we don't know.
It's not there today, that's a change.
Okay, so, here's what I would suggest to each of us. If there's anything that you wanna bring back or remember?
Yeah.
Make yourself a note.
Got it.
That's what I'm doing.
Got it.
And you bring it back later.
Cool.
I'm not gonna remember what you wanna talk about.
Sounds good. No problem.
Okay, so, what I've heard is, on that far right box, proposed changes in item number one, yes on number one, no on number two, no on number three. Number four, city council may waive planning commission recommendation by, by majority vote.
Isn't that, is that already?
They've got it. No.
Isn't that what happened already, Memorial?
No.
We heard it first.
Went to us.
And they voted?
Yeah, and they can, they can, but, but what this is talking about is them saying, you know what, we just want it straight away, we don't even wanna give planning commissioner a chance at it.
Oh, this is...
No, it says waive, waive planning commission recommendations.
Oh, well, yeah, they can clearly do that already.
It's what they already did.
Yeah.
But is that the intent here, or is the intent to actually skip our hearing?
Well, no, it says planning commission recommendation.
Staff would suggest looking at the page for that.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right, they can totally do that.
What is it? Which one?
What is it?
G eleven?
D, as in dog.
D eleven. I'm, I'm going to consistently refer to...
The red line.
Z.
D, so you can see what's changed.
Thank you.
Because G just shows the clean copy.
Right, right.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, um, letter, sorry, just, so it would be letter E three on that page?
Okay.
So process five, three, ability to waive planning commission recommendation.
Right.
The language there.
It says, and I read that, that they can, um, basically skip it coming to us.
Oh, man.
That's not what it says, though.
That's not what it says.
No, that's, that's, that's correct. This is skipping the planning commission. The council can waive the planning commission step in the process. With memorial care they appealed or called up your decision to themselves, with this, they can skip you in the process.
Yeah, we don't even hear it.
They are two different things.
Let's read that, let's read that together, though. It says, "Ability to waive planning commission recommendation."
No, 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 it says, "That the planning commission make a recommendation."
Right. That's our hearing.
Where's that?
In the, right in front of you.
Wrong here.
The city council by majority vote may waive the requirement of section whatever, that the planning commission make a recommendation before decision by city council. In such a scenario, the application shall go, shall go straight to the city council for consideration.
It's the number three recommendation we're looking at.
And we all had a heartburn with it before with the thumbs down, so this is, number three is what we would recommend be strike, be struck.
Correct.
We would strike number three.
And we're still all agreement on that. We don't like that idea.
Right.
Okay, so on the summary, number four, which is E three, there's just red, we don't like that.
Yeah, number four's out.
Power in the code.
I'm trying to make notes here, so...
I don't think we have the choice of that. I think they could throw us down.
Well, they, what, what they could do is, when we make this recommendation, they could add it back in and say, "No, no, no, we don't wanna take that away from planning commission." They can do that, but...
Yeah, we're just recommending.
Got you.
So staff, are you guys following with what our suggestions are?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sometimes staff says, "Well, this is our recommendation, these are planning commissions," and sometimes they actually merge them, and they're one and the same. So that might happen, we'll just have to see.
Okay.
Okay, so item, so, do people wanna break? Five-minute break?
I'll take that.
Okay. Let's, let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll resume.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, we're gonna reconvene the meeting, thank you for that. Moving on to item number two on the first page of the big sheet table.
Okay, so, um, my microphone. Uh, what I would suggest here is that we can look at the red line in conjunction with the table.
Okay.
That's how it was designed. So, so if you go to page D thirteen, then we'll have the red line when we talk about the table.
Twelve sixty-five, which is right there.
So what, what you're gonna see in this red line is, uh, some, I'll summarize these changes. Right now, to notify an applicant that their application is inactive, we have to send it by certified mail, a letter, and what the change is, is that correspondence can be sent. So, uh, it, it gives staff flexibility based on the context, so that's one thing. Also, the number of days that an application is incomplete, it'll be reduced from ninety days to thirty days. So if it's sitting there and, um, you know, keep in mind, we write a letter and we give them a list of things that need to be done to resubmit, we're not hearing anything for thirty days. If they contact us and say, "Hey, we're trying to contact them, they don't respond to us," that, it starts a process that allows the city to close the application. Uh, so, at that point, then we would send the correspondence to the applicant, letting him know that their application's inactive, and they would have thirty more days to submit something to us. Right now, it's ninety days plus ninety days, so it's a hundred and eighty days, and we found that it's too long. It's, like, these applications can, can go... Yeah, it's...
Does it have to be a revised submittal, or can it just be a letter stating, you know, where they're at in the process and that they're continuing to work on it?
Uh, if they contact us and say, "We're going through some challenges and we need more time to resubmit," then, okay, we're gonna work with them. These are... These are more applications where we contact the applicant, we let them know what we need, they don't respond to us, they sit around, and it's just not. Yeah.
But what, 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 what's the problem if it sits around? You guys aren't working on it. Like, it seems to me the applicant, and I've been an applicant many times, and I've had cities ask me for ridiculous volumes of stuff that quite frankly was completely inapplicable, but that's neither here nor there. And it takes a long time to get that stuff together. And you might have multiple consultants and they need to cross, cross.
Then you just tell them you're working on it. That's what he was.
I know, but I don't understand why. It seems like you're trying to kick people out of the process. If they, if they wanna go slow, let them go slow. I don't, I don't understand how this is gonna streamline anything.
This, this gives the city tools to address applications where staff is trying to make an effort to move things along and the applicant is not reciprocating. They are not communicating with staff. They're like not doing anything. So if we, we reach out to an applicant and if they don't communicate with us, we don't know what they want or when they plan to resubmit materials, it's an open case file. And just like, you know, other business or open case files over time are a burden to manage unresolved cases where. So this is a tool. It's not, this is not something that staff would plan on closing, you know, bunches of applications. But frankly, the timeline that we have right now, it's, it's proven to be, it hasn't proven to work. And it's longer than most cities.
Can you define inactive? What does inactive mean?
Inactive is we, we are required when we get a submittal to review an application within thirty days and write a letter to deem it incomplete. When we send them a letter, the applicant, they have items that they're to address. And if they don't get back to us, submit those materials, then it's inactive.
Okay, so I don't see that as being defined in here. Like inactive, it sounds like to me like inactive to you means an absence of contact after being reached out to.
Inactive is we give them, we, we give them the list of things that they need to do and they don't respond.
Exactly.
And, and then what we say here is we are going to contact them again and they would have thirty days to reply. Right now, it's ninety days and we're asking that it be thirty days.
Except that, except that you say they have thirty days to submit the requested information, funds or other information, but maybe it takes longer than thirty days to. You know, I would say it should say, or respond with an update or status update or something. I'd like to, I'd like to see that added.
Or we don't, or we don't cut it to thirty, we cut it to sixty.
I think the whole reason they're doing this is to be able to allocate staff time. If all of a sudden a bunch of these things last, one that lasts a hundred and twenty days, one that lasts a hundred and eighty, and they all come do it at the same time, they're not gonna get a quick response.
That's, that's just random. I mean, they could get six new big projects in the door tomorrow and per the Permanent Streamlining Act, they have X amount of days to respond.
They could prepare the clients for that. And they're not gonna be told, hey, we've had this in here for six months. Well, yeah, but you haven't done a damn thing.
That's like a blame shifting thing.
Well, I know, I know for me, if, if you give a list, sometimes it takes forty, you know, however long to get somebody there to even act on one item on that list. I think thirty days is.
It just takes a phone call to them, right?
Are you saying a phone call is gonna push you back? You want that phone call?
Yes.
If you get a phone call within thirty days, if you get a phone call within thirty days, that means you can get one phone call every thirty days, three phone calls in ninety rather than one. You can get more communication, which takes more staff time.
I've had applicants, I've had applicants where they don't contact us for months, years. And so we write a letter, certified mail. We don't even know if their contact information's current anymore. We try to contact them. And then they will contact us within ninety days. Like, let's say that they have all this time and then they will, say, submit the letter. And then it extends it all over again. So then we're writing another letter and they have another ninety days. And I can, and so we're not like proactively seeking out to close applications. We're just seeking to have a tool that allows us to more efficiently address instances where applicants aren't trying to work with us.
So I fundamentally, I hear what you're saying. I fundamentally have a problem in that it's the applicant's project. It's not the city's project. It's the applicant's project. We don't know what's going on with their financing, what's going on with their partnerships, their legal, who knows what, their contract negotiations. They could have all kinds of stuff going on that causes them delay. And it doesn't, it seems to me like if you're not getting the stuff in, you're not having to work on it. It might sit on a list, open case list, fine. But I don't see how it really burdens planning staff. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Can I ask this question? Will the Trackett system change your business process as it relates to the, you know, you'll accept incomplete applications or you'll accept certain things? And will the Trackett system automate ticklers, reminders? I mean, to me, when you do the Trackett system, you should be doing a business process reengineering. Like, okay, let's redo our processes so the system is, you know, automation is leveraged. Are you guys doing that? Is that maybe where this conversation belongs? With the implementation of Trackett?
I'm working on the Trackett piece for planning. And there's just like email notifications that are built into the software. It wouldn't fundamentally address this issue. It wouldn't, I wouldn't change this. Is this. You know, other than maybe with the eTrackett, most applications will be coming on over the internet. And so I would think more applicants will be using email. So maybe that could affect things if they're, were able to communicate by email. I've, I've found that sending a certified letter, people do move. And we've had instances where it comes back and they don't tell us where they live. So it just sits there.
All right, let me bring up the scenario of a guy's second house, you know, and, and he's doing the home something, you know, he's gone for four or five months at a time. I just, I don't know.
Well, so, so by the way, Chris, I wasn't arguing with you. I was just kind of letting my fellow commissioners know what and how I feel about it. And I understand your desire to clean up the list too. But how, how do, how do we feel collectively about, about this? We've kind of talked about it.
I don't have a problem with it.
You don't have a problem with it as written?
I have a problem with the thirty. Because I think that, you know, these things pile up and they're just, they're part of your workload.
Okay.
And if they can't at least send an email.
Okay.
To say we're working on it.
That's not what this says. So, so we should add this. This doesn't, that's what he said, that the written doesn't say, send an email, respond to an email, respond with a phone call.
Maybe it's written response.
Yeah, cuz it says submit the stuff. You have thirty days to submit the stuff that they're asking for. So I'd suggest then that we revise it to say, within thirty days, respond by email, written, or telephone.
So how about to thirty calendar days to submit a written response?
Perfect.
Because we would want something for the file.
Perfect.
And it'll highlight those, that requirement.
And this is just for planning approvals, not building, not building.
Right.
Or anything else. This is strictly planning approvals.
So a written response. Are we good with that collectively?
What are you changing?
Well, instead of within thirty days, they have to submit the requested materials, funds, or other information.
Oh, okay.
They have to, they can submit a written response.
Okay.
Okay. Do you feel, Christopher, that that takes up all of this item number two category on the big? Or is there more?
Just one quick moment. Let me just make sure I write down what the commissions. Yeah, the rest is more just clarification. It's not, it doesn't change anything.
Yeah, cuz there's one thing too. I mean, I assume that there's application fees that are paid in advance of this kind of non-response. So then to just drop them out of the thing, potentially make them have to pay new application fees is, you know, not what I think we wanna be doing.
But then it goes on to say though, at the bottom, it says, if city requests materials or funds are not thereafter received within thirty days, then, then the application begins to be inactive. So you're telling me I have to revise, if you give me a list of ten items or even one of those, say you only give me a one item list. And that thing is with an architect or an engineer that is so backlog himself, he can't even get to it for thirty days because I chose the wrong one.
Yeah, I just updated that based on what I heard to if the, if the city does not receive a response within the thirty days.
So you're changing that in a couple places?
Yes.
Right, there's a couple different references. Okay.
Yeah, to be consistent, yeah.
Okay, cool.
And with regard to funds, if a deposit account is opened up and there's money there and the applicant doesn't contact us, we, we have to refund it when they contact us. So I, that wouldn't change.
Well, this says refund the unused deposit.
Yes, the point being is if there's, an applicant has funds that are left over and we don't hear from them, when they, when we receive contact from them, we will refund the money. Like, we, we don't just keep the money. We refund the money that they have.
Right, but just for clarification, you're funding a part of the money, not the whole money.
Unused portion.
Cuz it says unused portion.
Unused portion, correct, yeah. Unused portion.
Okay. Okay, so that's it for item number two on the big sheet, correct?
All right, one down.
Number three.
Okay, so that's on D, D eighty-eight.
Say that again, Christopher?
Uh, D.
D eighty-eight.
D eighty-eight.
That's a good one.
Uh, there's changes, but we should coordinate after. I'll send you, I'll scan this and email you my notes tomorrow. Does that work? So page D eighty-eight, there's language here and what, if, if you look at it, what it means is right now, if you expand a small, single-family home that is smaller than fourteen hundred square feet and it doesn't meet all the zoning standards, you are able to, with a zoning administrator approval, to expand it more than fifty percent. But you can't do it more than twenty-one hundred square feet. What staff's proposing is not requiring designer view by default, but that the zoning administrator can refer things to the designer review subcommittee if there's a need. In staff's experience, the limited times that these have gone before the designer review subcommittee, there's really not a lot of discussion because they either, they have to meet the zoning ordinance for that addition. So the addition has to meet the high limit, has to meet the setbacks, has to meet all these things. And a lot of times, these projects aren't in the architectural overlay. Otherwise, it would have to go to the planning commission, not the zoning administrator. So we're, we would still have the option to go to the designer review subcommittee, but it wouldn't be required by default. That's the change.
Does this include historic structures too?
It does. However, if you're doing an addition over five hundred square feet to a historic structure, this wouldn't really be the, it would, it would go to the planning commission. So this would, this really would be more of a factor if it's a house and it doesn't normally trigger any sort of public hearing, but because it doesn't meet a setback or some sort of development standard in the city, then it requires them to go through a public hearing to have a bigger addition. So this isn't what the type of project you normally see.
For clarification, under AI, exception for single-family dwelling units, would it be helpful if we said, exception for nonhistoric, insert the word, nonhistoric, single-family dwellings?
I would not do that.
Don't need that?
I would not do that because it precludes then the option for historic building to be expanded more than fifty percent, up to twenty-one hundred square feet.
I thought they went through a separate process if it was five hundred feet or more, square feet or more.
It, well, it says, it says here. So like, like was pointed out earlier, everything is intertwined, right? So the names of permits are updated. If you look here, it says, the approval of a development permit or a cultural heritage permit, right? So for historic resources, let's say someone were. Let me, let me think about this for a second.
That's why I brought it up, cuz the C, the CHP is in here. If it wasn't, I would have brought it up. But this clearly applies to historical dwellings as well. And that's a concern of mine, that that would be a non-public hearing at this, with this rule.
No, the, okay, so this would continue to be a public hearing. This would not remove any public hearings. All this is saying is if something.
It would bypass the design review too.
No, this is if you had a small addition.
This is talking about expanding it to twenty-one hundred square feet. So that's in it, that's seven hundred square feet, that's fifty percent roughly if, or more if it's smaller than fourteen hundred, which are, Ole Hansen dwelling units are pretty small, some of them. So that's, that's where I'm trying to drill in. The rest of it, I don't care. If it's nonhistoric, this is good to me. But if it's historic, then I, I'm just trying to get clarity, clarity around that.
Yeah, I just need to think a minute. Okay, so I'm gonna explain why I don't think that's a, an issue. So this, this has a reference to the cultural heritage permit section. So if a project had to go to the planning commission, automatically it has to go to designer review subcommittee or a cultural heritage subcommittee if it's a historic building. So that would not change. The only time that this would have any effect whatsoever, this type of change, is if normally it doesn't require any type of public hearing, but because it's non-conforming, they have to go through a process to expand it more than fifty percent. That's the only time we would be eliminating designer review subcommittee review. And, and it doesn't say that here. I'm, I'm saying that this references another part of the code. If you'd like to look at that, we can.
Because talking to you tonight, it, there's, you know, you have your perspective, but if you're not here five, ten years from now, this can, so either, yeah, let's review that because I'm leaning towards then striking the CHP out of here.
Okay, I'll pull up that part of the code here and you could see.
Why don't we just strike that out there?
Yeah, then we move on. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, to me, find the page and then, you know, we.
I don't know why.
If you don't need it in there, it's a moot point.
Yeah.
But if you need it in there for a reason.
I'm trying to find seventeen dot sixteen dot one ten. Just strike the CHP reference in here where it says, or a cultural heritage permit. Just strike that.
No, I don't think, I do not rec, staff doesn't recommend that. Because what that means is in no instances now can you expand a historic building, a single-family home, more than fifty percent.
Why wouldn't that be referenced elsewhere on where it's control, the section of code where it's controlling historical dwelling units? Why isn't that the controlling part of our code? Why isn't that the controlling part of our code?
Be- because culture, the culture heritage permit now only applies to historic buildings, so if you remove culture heritage permit, now we're limiting this to nonhistoric buildings.
So what you're saying is, this gives them the right to do that, and then that permit will have to go through it, that path?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Is everyone clear on that explanation?
Thank you for helping me help you.
We got there, okay.
Okay, so, do we, how do we feel about this as proposed?
Okay.
Is everybody okay with it?
Yep.
Okay. Moving on to number, item number four on the big list, is that correct?
Uh, number four, the red line is page D sixty-seven.
I'm sorry, um, can I just ask a question about that line item again?
Yes.
Just because I'm not clear, clear on the noticing. I don't know if that's somewhere else, but is the public notice still in place for this ZA decision?
Um, yes, the ZA would still be public notice.
So this one is, is public noticed?
Yeah, the only difference would be a very limited place where it wouldn't go to designer review by default if-
Okay. As long as it's public notice, that's the main thing, okay. Thank you, sorry.
Oh, sure. Uh, page D sixty-seven is for item number four. So, I actually have a example for this, so I'm gonna pull that up. Okay. So this is an instance where there's a single-family home, and there's a, a detached accessory building in the back. Uh, let's say that there's a garage there, let's say that currently there is a, a single-family home with just a detached garage, and someone, that garage fully meets the setbacks that are required in the zone, ten feet from the rear property line, let's say five feet from the side, meets all that. They want to expand that garage a second level to add a room. Right now, you need a conditional use permit that goes to the planning commission to do that. What this item would do is eliminate that, it would allow accessory buildings that fully meet required setbacks for the house to be the same height as the, up to the height of the zone. Tre, it would basically be treating the detached building the same as the house. So that regardless of whether the building in the back is attached or not, it still has to meet the same rules as the house.
Which, what's the height limit on residential zone?
Uh, twenty-five feet.
So that's the max that could go?
Yes.
Was the original intent of the CUP to control use, such as rentals and or on parking, on-street, off-street parking?
Um, I think it was, I, I, I can't say for certain, I, I do think that there's an important distinction in what's proposed from what exists today. And that is, we're saying the only time that you can get this height exception is if it meets the setbacks. So, that's not in the code right now. Right now, it just says, anytime you want the building over fifteen feet up to twenty-five, doesn't matter, has to go to the planning commission with CUP. But we're, we're breaking that into another part, and we're saying, if you meet the setbacks, just like the house, then you can be the same height as the house, so that-
As the house?
As the house, or a, as the height limit of the zone.
Right, right, hi Karen.
So in this case, that detached structure probably doesn't meet the setback.
Correct, yeah, this is like, the best I could find, or yeah, slide, yeah. You don't get a lot of these.
Well, if, a couple things, one is, you said, well, it would come to the planning commission if it was over fifteen, but if it came to the planning commission and it didn't meet the setbacks, we probably, the planning commission probably wouldn't be very excited about it.
Correct.
So, there's an assumption we could make there. But what, my understanding is what you're really saying is, you're kind of trying to eliminate the attached versus detached distinction. Is that correct?
Correct, yes, that's right, because sometimes when people will build like a breezeway to get around the rules, they'll build like a hallway to connect the buildings, and, uh, really, when you, when you consider what the design guidelines say, the intent is to break up buildings. So, by having a detached building, you're having less mass than a bigger one building.
Right.
Again, we're looking at streamlining benefits, as well, well, mostly.
Yeah.
I- in, in effect, this, in, this nudges, incentivizes, in this sort of project, and incentivizes someone to build an addition that meets the setbacks, cuz then you could go higher without having to go through a public hearing.
Through lot.
Through lot has a frontage on a street on both sides, so if you have a lot where, um-
Corner?
No, it's, um-
Normally streets, you know, there's streets and there's two houses back to back, one fronting each street.
Right.
But some streets are so close together, it goes all the way through, and it has frontage in the front and the back, one lot.
And that's the exclusion.
Yeah, you would not be able to, um, you, this only would apply as if the building is in the rear half of the lot and it's not fronting a street. Not that, it's like this situation where it's a single-loaded situation and there's not a street in the back. So that, it's a budding another property, not a street.
I'm okay with the proposal.
Okay.
You know the scratch on, um, scene? Isn't that same on the scratch on, the scratch on scene? Yeah, you scratched out the scene, it were portions, cuz they kinda wanted to go in front.
Oh, yeah, and to me, look at that, and portions are definitely look front and the rear half, both.
Trying to grasp a foreinstance on that.
I, I guess that, hmm.
But what was the intent?
Both in the front, that would be like if the building is straddled and, like, right in the middle of the lot. So if the building is on the middle of the lot, then you apply both, eh, that, this is like a, a necessary code section because you don't need that to apply the other standards. They're still gonna apply, it's just unnecessary.
Karen, where are you traveler? Would you, would you like to join us on the dais or just on a, okay? We would love to have you. You might quickly, you might quickly turn around and go back.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, Karen Prescott Lefler is joining us on the dais.
A through lot is defined in the zoning ordinance.
But I mean, if they wanted to add a, this is under, standard for what fin? So it's height, where are the heights of through lots?
Oh, s- yeah, so what this is essentially saying is, um, that you, oh wait, here, I mean, read this actually.
What's excluded, the clear lot, but what portions of A and B, are you involving the rear one half? A through lot, but which is the rear and which is the front?
I just need to read this.
Probably based on addressing. You're addressed on one street, you're addressed on one straight street.
Encroach into required setbacks. Okay, so, um, I think it's fine if you wanna take that out. I, I see your point, if you wanna take that out, because they would have to go through a public hearing to, to go over fifteen feet if it doesn't meet setbacks, so, uh, I think you could take that out. Good, good catch.
Which we're taking out, C?
Uh, no, it's the end of a, of a sentence, um, in B, um, it says-
Or cultural heritage permit, section seventy blah blah, excluding through lots, period.
Yeah, so, we're, yeah, removing excluding through lots.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we generally okay with this item? I see, nodding heads, yes. Okay. Moving on to number five.
Okay, uh, this is on page D forty-six. Okay, so, uh, first, I'd like to highlight that this is the, the first time we've seen a page with the new format for the applications, uh, we're putting them in tables now. And that's to, this is more of like one of those clarification changes to make it easier for the public to, to read. So, this item, what you're gonna find is, it would actually be really helpful for me to, um, I, I, now, I know that this is a historic building, but this is, there's not many of these situations, so I'm gonna use this. Pretend this is not a historic building. So, this is like, say this, because this is actually a non-residential building in real life, and it could be any non-residential building, okay? And the idea here is, in the code today, if you do, you can do less than a two thousand square foot addition to a non-residential, um, building, and it goes to the zoning administrator. So if you have under a two thousand square foot building, or under a two thousand square foot addition to a non-residential building, it is a zoning administrator approval. It says nothing about accessory buildings. It says, new buildings, planning commission. Addition under two thousand square feet, zoning administrator. So, so new building, doesn't matter what the building is, any size, planning commission. It could be a shed, planning commission. Addition under two thousand square feet, zoning administrator. So shed, planning commission, under two thousand square foot addition, plan, zone, planning, uh, zoning administrator. What we're proposing is that we, is consistency. So if, if you can have an under two thousand square foot addition to the house, you can have an under two thousand square foot accessory building, like a garage, like, there's a garage in the back. If they wanna put a garage back there and it's under two thousand square feet, it would be treated the same as if they attached that building to the house as an addition. That's what's proposed.
This is public noticed?
Public noticed, yeah. Yeah, essentially what we're doing is we're, we're defining, um, how big a building, when, when it says new building, any new building has to go to the planning commission, we're divide, we're defining the size. So if it's under two thousand square feet, then it's zoning administrator. If it's more than two thousand square feet, planning commission. Just like if you do an addition, if it's under two thousand square feet, zoning administrator, over two thousand square feet, planning commission. So we're treating it the same as an addition. And there's a couple changes like this in this table, this principle you're gonna see again.
Okay, okay. Everyone okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great.
So this would not apply to historic buildings, to be clear.
We were pretending.
Yes, thank you for-
But it says somehow, it says, if it's screened, you want that in there, if it's screened from public view?
Yeah, I think that's-
Yes, because our thought was, like, like, that it should be like be behind the main building. It's a non-residential facility and we want additional review of those type structures. So, um, we wouldn't wanna streamline all of them, yeah.
Okay.
You go to the next one?
Number six.
Okay. Number six is also on the same page, D forty-six. This is, uh, I have another slide for this one. No, I don't think so, not on this one. But I, I am gonna use this example two times when we get to the other situation. So, in this slide, the blue, uh, wait, let me get my bearings here. Okay, I wish you could see my cursor, you can't. The blue parcel that is outlined in black with the black arrow to it, there's a picture at the bottom, there is a project there that you're seeing that went to the planning commission. And it's, uh, it was a new house across from the historic building that you could see on the corner across the street. And I know the arrow, arrow is actually, oh gosh, sorry. Hold on, just, just so that we're clear, cuz the public, the public can see the PowerPoint, so I, I don't know.
So the bottom picture right there is the house that's proposed, just got approved, and it's being constructed now. Not existing at all.
Okay.
That's the application, it's proposed, right, across the street from-
Okay, there.
Right.
Okay, so the arrow, the yellow arrow points to the historic building.
On the red lot.
Yeah, on the red lot, and that, that's, the arrow actually shows that across the street, that's the top picture on the left. So this idea is, if you have a single-family residence or duplex, you propose on that blue parcel across the street from the historic building. And, let me have the wording here. This is on D forty-six, so this is item C four on that page. So it says, a two-story, single-family dwelling in duplex, which, um, actually, see, change, what do you wanna make there? C four, that's right. So, it should really say, new single-family dwelling, single-family dwellings in duplexes that are across the street, abutting the city's designated historic resources and landmarks list. If the building is less than a five-foot front setback between the first and second floors, so, picture that on the first level and the second level, the second level isn't setback more than five feet from the first level on the front.
It's setback more, or?
It's less, so the-
I, I'm, I'm gonna say, if you read it, it doesn't tell you that the second level's back. The way it's written, the second level could be on the setback and the first level could be setback five feet.
True.
Yeah, I think it's confusing.
So it just needs to be reworded, so it's clear that the second level is stepped back five feet from the first level.
Okay.
And is it new, new two-story?
It's, it's a new two-story, yeah.
I, I thought I heard you say, Christopher, that it was, step back was, if, if the step back need to be less than five feet, which I think it's five feet or more, right?
No, that's the staff approval is, it's more than five feet. If it's less than five feet, then it's a public hearing. So if the setback is less than five feet, cuz the code doesn't require a setback between the first level and the second level, that's like a restriction here.
What, this is pro- process three though, so it's still going to designer review and planning commission, right?
Let me.
I think it's EA's process two, isn't it?
Is this just on brand-new construction?
Yes, these are new new buildings.
Well, or remodel, how's that work? How do you?
Uh remodel is a different category of projects. This is a new building. So like subsection C is new development of residential buildings. These are all new buildings.
New as in add-ons or new as in?
New building.
Ground-up development, not an addition, not a remodel, new building. So really, like if we wanna make this even, I I I try not to have people jump from section of the code to another section. I just think it's harder to read. Um I I would, the idea here, I'm trying to. The idea here is if the second, the second level of the home, assuming they have a second level, is set back less than five feet from the first level. And that the second level of the house isn't set is set back less than thirty feet from the front property line where the building is taller than the historic building. That would have to go to the planning commission. So what we're trying to do here is anything that does not meet the criteria, the strict criteria for a staff level approval would automatically have to go to the planning commission. That's the idea here. What?
That's I think that's what this is saying.
Yeah, so thi- this is basically making sure that if staff can approve it, it goes to the planning commission. That's what the the point of.
In an existing neighborhood, this only applies if somebody demos an entire building pretty much. Or has a vacant lot, yeah.
Christopher, can you identify a landmark, so I understand the landmark?
Um and and a landmark, it has been identified to have added significance in the community. I think there's uh correct me if I'm wrong, at five landmarks, like the Costa Romana.
But that's on the National Registry is the five.
Uh there's city, city designated landmarks.
Yeah, we have more than five on that list. So the the designated list um that we have, and I can send a copy for reference in the future, will have an asterisk for um certain properties and and kind of a star for those that are landmarks. And you're correct where the design the the differentiation is simply that those were identified back when we did our historic resource survey work in two thousand and six as having an especially uh good representation of historic value. And um what that we do have a finding that does, not in this section, but in the cultural um heritage permit review, that gives a little bit more stringent um look when it is a landmark. It's it's a more strict requirement of compliance to SOI standards when it is a landmark.
So we have the, it has to remain the same, I can't go above the historic. What is the code for landmark if it's?
No, 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 it's not like that. No, a landmark would be.
Correct and incorrect, thank you for that clarification. Most of the the landmarks are uh still residential.
Large oak tree that.
No, no, no.
Okay, got it.
They're co-mingled, the registry and landmark, same, they're the same. They're just one is a little bit higher value. And there's two hundred and three in the city.
So should there be a has between building and less?
Um I I would actually like to suggest.
Less than A and B, A or B?
I I was gonna suggest some changes um that I think would address your uh question, Mr. Sherman. Uh the first is at the beginning, I would say new, not two-story. Then to simplify this, as I explained, this is to catch any projects that are not eligible for a staff approval, right? And I know we're gonna talk about staff approvals later. But um I would change this and say new single-family dwellings and duplexes across the street abutting the city's designated historic resources and landmarks list that do not that are not eligible for an administrative development permit in section seventeen sixteen dot zero nine five. So it's just kind of simple and um essentially says anytime you can't meet a uh get a staff approval, you have to go to a public hearing. And I'll note that this should say process two. That's what staff was proposing to go to the zoning administrator, not the planning commission, cuz right now it goes to the planning commission. So that was staff's, those are my suggested changes.
This is still saying planning commission.
No, it says Z A on the right.
It's supposed to say process two.
It says process three.
Right, but he's saying he wants it to say process two.
Process two is what it was, yeah.
So the reason why is because you think with the setbacks, the impact on the historical building is not that big a deal.
That's right, that it's across the street from a historic building.
I'm looking to Bart and Steve to, you know, nod on that. If you guys agree with that, uh you're the architects, I need to see that you agree with that.
It is, it's not um significant impact. Obviously, it'll have a little bit uh it's a hundred and what do you think the street frontage, the the street right away is?
A lot of times it it's about sixty feet.
Sixty plus thirty, so it's a hundred feet away.
Okay.
Uh to the um.
Well, right, even the reduced one, we're saying a hundred and twenty is an impact. So that's why I'm kinda looking you guys to see if you're comfortable with that.
We have been in previous projects, that it works.
Okay.
This would not preclude it from going to the DRSC for review prior to zoning administrator.
But yeah, you'd have to refer it though, right? In your judgment? Staff would. This is public noticed?
Yes.
And then it goes to Z A.
Goes to zoning administrator.
Yeah. So when I bring up the appeal process whenever I can, this would be like what an example I would use. If this goes through, it gets approved, and then there's an a concerns expressed after the fact, hey, you missed this, hey, we have a problem with that. This is where I would want to change our appeal process, so when the Z A makes a decision, we can call it up, which currently we can't do.
Right, something that gets appealed on a zoning administrator decision automatically gets appealed to the city council.
Right, and I wanna, I'm gonna propose later we change it to come to us. And that we can also appeal it ourselves. We can call it up. And I'll propose that we do it on a majority vote, not a single member.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Any more questions on that idea?
Okay, so we've heard Christopher's explanation and revisions. How do we feel about?
I think it's fine.
Okay.
As Bart and Steve say, it's fine.
Okay, so we're good with that with the revisions?
Okay. Okay, let me just say. See edits. Okay, the next one, in some respects.
Hey, can I can I interrupt? I'm sorry. Back to this is only for ones across, the one we just talked about is only across the street, right? Not next-door ones, not?
Correct, only across the street.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, cuz it the way it's worded in the summary is a little different, but. Yeah, it says and a budding, and I was gonna take issue with side yard setbacks in that case.
So the code defines a budding as across the street.
So is next door not a budding?
Next door is a budding, so I could say, but not adjoining, I guess I could say, you know, across the street, but not adjoining.
Yeah, because if it's next door, I definitely don't want that to be the case.
Correct, yeah, staff wouldn't suggest that either.
On that slide there, what what are what are the green ones representing?
Um the green ones are um adjoining. So what we're just talking about, yeah, they're touching the the lots. The blue ones are across the street. And um also, you can actually, a budding includes if it's across the street and it's like uh you like, yeah, I won't. We don't know if we need to get into the technicalities, but like.
Well, before we move on.
I can if you want to, but I don't.
Before we move on, a budding does to me to the layperson does not sound like across the street. So we should probably properly define that, cuz the layperson reading their code and requirements, it'd be nice if it was just clear.
I agree, cuz in my language cleanup in the code, I s- I wanted to start inserting across the street.
Right.
To when we mean across the street.
Yeah.
And a budding for neighbors next door.
Yeah, I I came across that at a recent odd item before the zoning administrator where it was described as a budding, a budding, a budding. And it wasn't a budding, in my view, it was across the street. But the explanation from staff is that the um the property lines are taken out to the center of the street. So then, if you do that for both sides of the street, then the hu- the structure across the street or the lot across the street is a budding.
Okay, so I understand that, but I think it'd be nice if it was clear in common usage of the terms to people.
Parentheses.
So if we can make it specific, you know, just specific, and like I said, it's definitely not to where I don't want that case for side yard adjoining. So if we can specify that.
I can definitely make those changes. I would suggest something like saying cuz ac- across the street alone isn't gonna be adequate, because you can have across the street and so far away. So something like adjacent or um.
Within prolongations of the side property lines.
And then a join, to me, adjoining makes more sense than a budding.
The the rule of the feet, right? A hundred and twenty feet across uh across the street. Isn't that how we would draw the line?
Um well, like to to Cecilia's point, we have a di- we have a picture in the code that I think has a lot of value. It essentially says if you take the prop- so let's just use this example and I'll blow this up some. So, gosh, I wish I could use my cursor. So if you take a property line, let's say you take the lot that is high uh outlined in black, okay? And you take the side property line and you extend that across the street. If any part of that blue property would, you think of it like the street doesn't exist, that's the idea. Like the street doesn't exist and the lots are sandwiched together. Would there be any touching? Would the lots touch?
Yeah, within the prolongations of the lines.
Would they touch, right? So we, I do think somehow we need to maintain that standard, that's a a long-time precedent. Um but it's a more a matter of framing that differently. That's what I'm hearing from you is it's um not changing the policies, changing the nomenclature, and I'll just have to think through that.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
Okay.
But please, specific to that this case does not for the adjoining.
Yes, not adjoining.
Okay.
Only the blue ones in this case, yeah.
Okay, awesome, thanks. Item seven.
Okay, so in this instance, since you have a historic building at the yellow arrow shaded in red, and then the brown shaded parcel is within three hundred feet of that, all right? I I measured it out for this slide. It's more than a hundred and twenty feet away from the building on the historic property. So it's more than a hundred and twenty feet, and it's more than two parcels, cuz it's not a it's not on the same side of the street, right? So in this instance, uh oh gosh, I need to be, I need to, I sorry, just kinda muddled two things together. I need to, I need to, hold on, just I'm trying to use this vis- this this the three hundred feet thing, I think, uh can get a little confusing, so I'm trying to I really wanna use this slide. Let me cha- let me change it real quicker. Okay, so here's an instance where you have a building here, like the the black parcel, and it's technically brown, right? It's not across the street like the blue shaded parcel we were talking about before. It's further away. It's.
Adjacent.
But it's within a hundred and twenty feet, right? It's within a hundred and twenty feet of the red parcel. You could have up to, in this zone, four dwelling units on that parcel. Staff is suggesting in that instance, you would require zoning administrator approval for that type of project instead of planning commission. And I would have some suggested edits when we get to the text.
Where's that text?
Um that is number five, right below what we are talking about.
This is process three, thirty-one, process.
Process two.
This is, I think, what Larry and was warning us against as well as uh Wayne, so that's a concern. I think we need to res- listen to them.
Um the, well, to a point of clarification, uh or what I've understood, talking to Larry, is and and maybe he just says no changes at all, but I I know that there is added level of concern about um going from planning commission to staff, like that was a a a much bigger concern of his. In this case, we're saying zoning administrator.
With notice.
With notice. So the like the we're here, we're not saying get rid of public hearings. It's still a public hearing.
Yeah, because you have traffic impact if you have four dwellings. It does affect the neighborhood.
Okay, I, yeah, I um Cecilia's right, I shouldn't speak for Larry. I'm I'm saying, I just wanna make it clear that there's two different proposals here dealing with a hundred and twenty and three hundred feet. And this one does not eliminate a public hearing. That's the main point I wanna make, so I don't wanna speak for Larry.
Can I ask a a more of a high-level question? And I'm curious to see what who Bart has to say about this too. How does staff think about the distinction between developments near historic buildings on whether they're on the same street or, let's say, two hundred feet away, one or two streets over, you know? And or on the same side of the street versus the opposite side of the street?
Can can we use this, is there a way we could use this slide for that, just uh just to make sure I understand?
Sure. So does staff think in the the red, the 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 building with the yellow arrow? Let's assume that's historic building, historic home. And let's say the.
Lower right-hand, the lower right-hand brown lot.
Let's say, yeah, let's say across the intersection to the right over near the green building, so on the same side of the street, but it's kinda far away.
Okay.
How do how does how does staff feel about a a development there on the same side of the street versus potentially something across the street, on the opposite side of the street, versus potentially something off the screen to the lower left that's on a different street completely, but it's within a radius of whatever size we designate, whether it's one twenty or three hundred or whatever.
Yes, so we currently address those situations where you can't even see the project. Those don't require a hearing right now. So if if you're, let's say it's on down the street, it's still within three hundred feet, but you can't see the project from the historic building because there's a building in the way or the it drops down or something like that, those aren't subject to a public hearing.
Right now, they're not.
See it, no.
Okay.
So this would be only can you see the project, right? If you can see the project and it's within a hundred and twenty feet.
Okay, barring something that's either not the house right next door or not the house straight across the street from the historic. But do you think about it differently, whether it's on the same side a couple down versus across the street and a couple down?
Yes.
Or is that generically the same to to staff?
Yes, what we are trying to do here is define a certain amount of separation. So across the street is more separation. So then what we thought was, okay, well, how much separation? We thought a hundred and twenty feet is approximately at least two to three parcels away. And so that's why we say a hundred and twenty feet and two parcels, so it's at least two parcels away. That was, that's the idea behind the hundred and twenty. That was, that's the idea behind the hundred and twenty, more than two parcels, a hundred and twenty and the two parcels.
Okay. But, but I, I mean, I remember when we were, you know, most of us were new. Our very first meeting, I think, was, there was a historic home and way down there, we were looking at a triplex. With new garage doors and, and setbacks and we were talking about the parking over the sidewalk and this and that, and it was pretty far away. Um, but it was within apparently three hundred feet.
Did you see it? Do you think you could have seen the project at all?
They were, it was, it was down the street a long way, yes.
Okay, so if you could see the, that's essentially what we're.
No, it was the one, it was a triplex that was on the bluff and they wanted to do a remodel. And there was three crummy little garages and there was like a five foot driveway and, um. They were going to re- renovate the thing and make it better and.
Yeah, that's a good memory, I remember that.
So that is the situation where staff is proposing a staff approval, like that situation.
Right.
You could see it, it's still within three hundred feet, but it's re- further removed from the historic building.
Okay.
That's, that's what.
I just wanted, before we dig into the details of this, I want to understand if how staff thought about across the street, same side, different street. I didn't realize, for example, that if it was on another street, but within the three hundred feet, we didn't have to review it. So I'm happy to hear that, quite frankly.
Yeah, as long as you can't see it, that's the key thing.
Okay.
Uh, we, we make them prove that you can't see the project. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, so I, I, I'll, I'll make a note here that I know that Larry and Wayne had expressed concerns about the. Uh, a hundred and twenty versus three hundred feet. And so if the, a- and I know we haven't gone through everything, but I, I want to mention this now. If there's hesitation on, um, on eliminating, say, um, breaking it up. I think like one thing that staff was looking for is projects that are separated. More from a historic building than at some point we allow zoning administrator approval instead of planning commission. Is the kind of the, some lower level of hearing when it's a certain distance away from the historic building. That, that's kind of like the idea that staff was, um, exploring with these ideas. Um, and so, um, that, the details can be shifted or we don't, or nothing be done. But I just want to explain that idea.
Concerns, one is the shift, both involve the feet, that's the thing, that's what makes it confusing. So one is public notice, it says right here, number two. Reduces the distance in which a public hearing is required from three hundred to one hundred and twenty. I oppose that. I think that's one of the key things we need to retain is the public notice. The second thing would be then whe- whether it's a PC, you know, design review, PC or Z A.
Yeah.
And, you know, to me, it's kind of like, if we want to strike a compromise, if it's within one twenty, maybe we keep design review, PC. If it's beyond one twenty, up to three hundred, Z A. But we retain public notice across the board.
A- and staff could sup- staff would support that, that, that's in some form. Related to what staff's idea was, is that the further is away, then at some point it's a lower level hearing.
Right.
It's the same principle.
That, that's what I would advocate as our method for handling this.
Well, I thi- I think this is misstated here in the summary because, because you're right. They, they weren't proposing to get rid of a public hearing if the Z A is a public hearing.
Yeah, but it does if it's within three hundred, if it's, uh, they would not notice it if it was beyond one twenty, they wouldn't notice it.
They weren't going to.
That's, well, that's what this change is sa- saying.
We, yeah, we haven't got to that, that's li- a later item, um, let me get to the staff approvals. But I think that there's enough comments on this idea of a hundred and twenty and three hundred. I, I thought it was a good opportunity to just explain staff's.
Yeah.
The, the idea behind these changes and then that might inform not only what, what's done on this, but then the later item.
Okay, yeah, so wherever, wherever this three hundred, one hu- one twenty, we just ask staff, come back with. Don't change any public notice and then if it's within one twenty, retain the current process three. And then if it's beyond one twenty with two, up to three hundred, go to process two and retain public notice for both.
Okay.
I would like to, to add to that and jump on what Karen, the direction you were going. When you're talking about the fourplex and added parking requirements, um. Do we want to keep? The one twenty or, or the three hundred foot radius, planning commission, if it is a fourplex? And then just have the one twenty to three hundred kick in if it's a single family? Because the impact on a fourplex versus a single family is, is a big difference.
The structure.
The parking's the only thing that may be different.
Parking requirements for a fourplex, right?
Yeah, they have to park on site.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They have to include parking on site.
And they're still, if they're still a public hea- hearing though, with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah, also, just so we're clear, Larry, um, he said it's not, he doesn't need to be changed at all. He, he thinks it's working. In other words, these, he's not necessarily going to be happy, even with this amount of a change, just so we know that. I'm not saying don't do it.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah. So that's clear. Thanks for the reminder.
Um, so, and if I could just explain my, I said I had some suggested changes. I, I heard you on the abutting and the across the street distinction, uh, would be making that. But essentially, instead of getting into the, um. Well, let me put it this way, when we, when we, at some point when we come back, staff may reword this a little bit to be clear. If, if that, I, just, just to make a note there. Um, we may look to the spirit of what we've heard tonight. It's like I might see some opportunities to clean this up a little.
That what I'm trying to get at is there is a range of, of, of product here that some is a, just a non-issue. Like what your, your example, but sometimes it is. If it's all public noticed, Larry looks at it or anyone else, Wayne looks at it and they go, wait a minute, that, that, you know? And let's say it's beyond the one twenty, that, that's a problem for me. I'm assuming the way that Cecilia's going to handle is that she gets some letter from the public saying, we've got concerns about this. You correct me if I'm wrong, you're going to look at those, that public input is going to influence you to move it. If, if you don't get anything, you're going to go, great, that's what this is for, we'll make the decision. But if you hear public input that this is a concern, then it, it hits that threshold of not a concern, right? That's what the Z A's, if it's not a concern, a letter from someone like Larry or Wayne is going to be a concern. And then that would trigger, um, you're going to refer it. So it's not that it would not come back to D S C or planning commission. It would just give everybody, the community and staff, that flexibility where if it's a non-issue, it goes through. If it's an issue, a simple email would trigger, hey, there's concern in the community, let's push it back to process three. I'm interpreting it that way, if that's wrong, then we should talk about it.
I'll, I'll even take it a step further and as, um, the planning commission noted that there's some support for the idea of the city planner referring things. To the zoning administrator or planning commission. So if there's comments early on that we get that some things have concern, it wouldn't even go to the zone. You know, it could go to the planning commission.
Immediately.
Right? Because we could confer with the community development director and decide, hey, it's just go.
We're getting a le- we're getting letters or a letter from someone like Larry or someone from, you know, past official. That should trigger that threshold of, okay, this is an issue.
Yeah.
Um, I got to jump in, but only if it's a val- a valid concern.
Which is what.
You just can't have troublemakers sending letters in.
On everything.
On everything.
No.
So it's up to the zoning administrator or the city planner to make that decision whether it's a valid comment.
That's just not automatic. Example or Larry as an example, that would not be a.
So I have a question, so. Thought of this originally?
Yes.
Reason was that they didn't want, let's say, when, at, at the very beginning of this, when this was developed before, we're changing it now. That parcel there on the corner.
Okay.
What is, what was the perceived threat to the?
Oh, oh, I see, so the idea of the three hundred feet in planning commission?
Before we remove it, I want to understand what the, the spirit of the, the thought was to put it there and, and what was, what was the reasoning?
Um, I, I haven't researched the minutes dating back to that time, but, um. I think that I can just speak to, the code was last comprehensively updated in nineteen ninety-six. Um, so I, I think that this process has been in place for some time. And I'll just say that, I, I mean, I've been here over eighteen years and it's been here as the, at least that long. Um, and we've learned a lot with applications over time, um, to come to these conclusions. So, um, I think when the code was written some time ago, there was an added level of pause based on what was known then. And we're, staff's suggesting these changes based on this new experience that we've had since then.
Bart, not saying that you've been around that long. So we have, we have like three properties there that would qualify for. Three hundred feet, to me, it seems like it would have some sort of impact. I've of that area, but.
Um, like many codes, um, some things are somewhat arbitrary. And I think they took the extreme cautious, cautious route on going to three hundred feet. Um, and trying to do a circle where things aren't visible. Um, but the big concerns was scale, um, dwarfing our small little projects. Um, so that was the ones on, particularly on the left and right. And then getting the case where we have some on the adjacent streets downtown where, um. You've got a giant facade right on the front across the street, uh, dwarfing it. Um, and we want to avoid that. Um, you know, this whole thing, um, as far as the setback, uh, of the second story makes a huge difference and that's great. Um, and one reason we're having to stream, the best streamlining we could have is have no exceptions. And have to deal with any exceptions or any waivers or any, uh, thing like that. Because those always become discretionary and if you want your project approved quickly, you don't ask for any exceptions. You live within the code and that's what you get and, um, so I think what they're trying to do is get it where. Um, it's a little more obvious what is not an exception, uh, with the setback in the upstairs. If they want to try for two stories, straight on the street, they can try for it. But it's going to be going to, uh, a different review process. Um. So I think they're still protecting it. This isn't like this is the entire city. These are just.
These are.
Spot properties of what, two hundred and?
Two hundred and three.
Two hundred and three and most of them aren't going to be touched. So we're probably looking at over the next twenty years, what do you think?
Doesn't.
Ten percent would be a high number to guess would even come into play. Um, so we're being, is this going to really streamline everything in the city? No, but it's.
A little bit.
A little help.
I'm, I'm just wondering if this is just an area where it's not worth it?
Uh, that conclusion could be made.
For, for the, you know, the, the, um, the, the difference. Profit off of it, the, meaning that.
The benefit.
Yeah, that's certain, I mean, for the amount of time, um, Chris has put into this, he probably could have processed. A whole bunch of projects.
Well, and, and when you figure that there could be some angst in the community when it could be a private property? Benefit of just. Might, might be wise.
Uh, that argument could certainly be made.
Yes.
That, that's what we're going through right now and.
Might poke the bear if it's not necessary. Doesn't save you a lot of time, but yet we could save time somewhere else.
Can I, can I ask you a question, Bart, real quick? You said ten percent of the homes, but I, I think it doesn't seem right to me. Because we're talking about homes within three hundred feet of. Of, so it's not, yeah, maybe only ten percent of the historic homes over time are going to get tuned up. But when you consider all of the homes within that three hundred foot distance of the, I think that's a higher number.
Yeah, it's around.
Be fort- safe, but over the years, I mean, what do we get on this?
Four, four a year, five a year?
Yeah, um, maybe so. I, I think, um, to give staff's perspective here, I think we are looking at things a little bit more. Not on counting applications, but you know, this is a package. And the idea that every minute that we're not spending on something does have a benefit to another application. Even if it's one application a year, it's time.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that was the, our perspective.
But, you know, the adjacent properties do have rights, just like the historic property has rights. Which we got to consider also, you know, we don't want to over legislate against them, but, uh, some protection has to be provided.
Well, I'm going to chime in. Um, when I was on develop, design review subcommittee, there was a historic home. And there was, someone came in and, and proposed a two-story home immediately adjacent to it. And, and eventually it came to the planning commission. But what you didn't see is at the design review subcommittee level, um, Bart and Steve, they made them flip the design. And wedding cake the second story adjacent to the home and they did a lot of things to protect the home. And that, that happened at designer subcommittee, but, but yet there was still a path forward for that neighboring property to build a good project. And of approximately the size and scale that they wanted to. But because of their expertise, they were able to make it happen. And so I'm just, I'm just sharing that in that it's not a, it's not a scorched earth near the historic homes. They, they found a way to massage it.
And, and I think at one twenty, that doesn't change. You're on both sides, your design review. If you're across the street, your design review. Uh, it's if you're across the street and over a lot, maybe that's where it's, if it's beyond the one twenty. Then staff is going to be able to have the flexibility of saying, you know, it meets all these standards. We'll put it to the Z A with public notice. It's not, if, if somebody in the community says, I've got concerns with that, I don't, I don't agree with you, I think it's a big deal. They write it in, staff's going to get it, they're going to go, okay, let's, let's move this, let's move this. But if it's not an issue, they can decide that.
Do the Z A agendas get published? Online?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
As part of the M, M, D M, whatever, the design management, uh, whatever that.
D M T.
D M T, it's part of that whole, it's part of that. If someone's following that thread, they're going to see, it's going to be in there.
I'm okay with what's been proposed with the, keep the three hundred public notice. One twenty to three hundred, Z A.
Just leave it as is, that's another option.
Well, yeah, that's, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with.
Either one, I'm okay the other way.
You're okay with, okay?
I think we still have enough checks there.
Yeah. Dr. McCacken, how do you feel about it?
It doesn't matter to me either way.
Okay.
I'm leaving it as is, I don't see a reason.
Okay.
Yeah, that's valid.
Commissioner Candel?
Chris?
Yes.
Is this just historic resources or is this also landmarks? This is landmarks also, right?
Uh, yeah, both.
Well, I, I would take the cautious way on whenever landmarks are concerned that we.
Three hundred?
Three hundred.
Agreed, agreed. And what process, leave it three or let it go to two?
Three would be.
Three would be planning commission, that's what, that's what I think you're saying.
Process three.
You're, so you're saying three hundred feet for landmarks, but what about for?
For other, I could go to a reduced one.
The other thing too, by the way, we can keep in mind is, you know, we could do something different between one hundred and twenty and three hundred, just to throw that out there. There's some different number that made people more comfortable. Commissioner Davis, how do you feel?
Oh, like two hundred, we could say, or one fifty.
Why'd you come up with one twenty?
Yeah, maybe one fifty is better.
How do we come up with it?
Yeah, is there a specific kind of math you did, across the street, down the lot, two lots?
Yeah, we, so we went off what the code requires for a lot size. It's, it's sixty feet wide, but you look at these lots right here, they're not sixty feet wide, they're like forty-five. So you're looking at at least two parcels over, so that was what we were going for, at least two parcels.
Yeah, so I, I could, I concur with Commissioner Candel.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, so what, what I heard was, if it's a landmark, within three hundred feet comes to planning commission. If it's a historic structure or home, the zero to one twenty stays at the planning commission level. One twenty to three hundred zoning administrator, all of which still gets public notice in the, in the noticing circle.
Understood.
Yeah.
What I heard?
Understood.
Okay.
And again, that's why I still wanted the, the appeal call up. If we, if something is in the one twenty to three hundred, it goes to ZA and then later Larry pops up, oh, that was a mistake, we can call it.
Right, yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay.
But we'll, make a note, we'll deal with that.
Okay, I'm just using this, so the context, so we're all on the same page.
Yeah. Okay, was that clear, staff?
Yeah, I have it noted, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to pull up this again.
Relative to this meeting, how are people feeling? I'm thinking we call it at ten.
Agreed.
You guys want to do it sooner or later than that?
Yeah, it's nine.
Specific. Is that, should we target that?
Yeah, at the latest.
Well, I could call it now if you guys want.
Oh, I wouldn't call it now.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
So number eight, right?
Number eight, yes, that's page D forty-six.
While they're looking that up.
The same page.
Just to be clear again, reiterate the, the project process type. Residential accessory buildings, new, so this is just new construction?
This is new construction, correct, new building.
Not an add-on?
Not an addition, not a remodel, new building.
Man, that's really going to dwindle it down to how many of these are going to, how many new buildings are next to these historical areas?
Well, well, I think what we're getting at, let's see with this one. Um, visible, okay. So if someone wants to add a detached garage, for example, that's, that's, and this would come into play, residential building. Sometimes people have a garage, it's like, we've talked about it before, years ago, where there's a one-car garage, the code requires a two-car garage, and they want to do an addition and add a two-car garage. Right now, the moment that they replace the one-car garage with the two-car garage has to go to planning commission. Even if the size of the addition to the house is less than five hundred square feet, the moment that they put the garage in, it's a new building and it has to go to planning commission. So what, what we're, this is the same principle that we had before. We were talking about additions being treated the same as an accessory building. The size, we are defining the size of the accessory building. So if it's, in this case, under fif- five hundred square feet, and I think we say if it's, uh, if it's under five hundred square feet.
And the impact is the same.
But this, it doesn't say anything about within X feet of a historic?
No.
Just, just period, a new.
Period, yeah, this is so like if it's, so this is like if it's in the architectural overlay, if it's across the street from a historic building, even if it's, let's see, new visible, invisible, invisible from adjoining public right away. Let me look at the wording here.
This, and it says invisible there, but it says, in the, in the detailed wording, it says, in sensitive areas visible from adjoining public right away.
Yeah, so sensitive areas we define in here as architectural overlay, residential properties of the single family or duplex abutting the city's historic list. And properties within a hundred and twenty feet or two parcels, whichever is smaller, from residentially zoned historic buildings. So, and on those properties, if you did an accessory building of less than five hundred square feet, fifty percent, then it would be zoning administrator review, not planning commission. And right now.
But right now it's planning commission?
Right now it's planning commission. I think like the biggest thing that staff wants to emphasize here is, going back to that other example, if the code today says if you do less than a five hundred square foot addition, that is zoning administrator. Any new building shed, planning commission, doesn't matter what building it is. What we're saying is, if the building, define the building size. So if the building is less than five hundred square feet, zoning administrator. Over five hundred square feet, planning commission, so just like an addition. At the same threshold, are defining it by floor area.
I'm okay with that.
But it's a new building.
It's a new building.
A new accessory building, it's not a new primary building.
It's accessory building, like, like here's the thing, so let's say you did in a, a garage add-on, and the garage is attached to the building, and it's less than five hundred square feet, that's zoning administrator. But the moment that, um, is a different building, like a detached garage, planning commission, same-sized garage.
Maybe this doesn't apply, couldn't you just do an ADU? And skip this whole thing?
They could, or maybe they truly want a garage.
Yeah, if they want an, if they want an ADU.
Yeah.
I, I still don't, I still, everywhere I see the public notice reduced, I think we should un, unreduce it. That should just, we shouldn't be reducing public notice.
Point, point taken, and.
Wherever it appears.
I, I, I agree with that. I think everybody does. Yeah, so just across the board on all the discussions, public notice stays at three hundred feet.
Under, understood, so I'll be mindful of that when we get there. We haven't quite got there yet, but yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm personally as one vote out of seven, I'm okay with what's being proposed. Let's see, two nods down on my right, three nods.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Have we given you adequate direction on that?
I do, I do, thank you.
Okay. Number nine?
Okay, so this is, um, D fifty-five, and this is dealing with historic buildings. Same idea, but historic buildings. So the big difference though, is that in this case, you could not see it, see the building from adjoining public right away. So if you're at the street, you cannot see the proposed building. It would have to be behind the historic building screened from the street. Like if it's a historic building, and you wanted to do like a garage, you wouldn't be able to see it from the street. And that would be zoning administrator, not planning commission.
I don't think you're really going to even have very many of these. I mean, you're, almost always if someone builds a garage in the back, you can still see the garage door or whatever, for the most part. Yeah, then they'd say, well, you see the roof, I don't know. They convert, I think they converted a garage into an ADU. Yeah, Dr. McCacken was not happy, I remember.
You know?
Our escape route was to the.
Yes, yes, I remember.
So I actually have, I've had a situation like this where our current administrative permit says that staff can't approve a building. And someone wanted to have a shed on a historic building site, and they had to go to the planning commission for a shed. It, it has happened before.
Okay, so, but this specifically says, less than five hundred square feet and not screened from the public right away, you're right?
Correct.
Okay, I'm okay with that. A bunch of nodding, yes? Okay. Number ten?
Number ten.
Looks like the same thing, but visible from the public right away.
I'm a no.
No to the proposal. Leave it as is. Am I interpreting that correct, Christopher, that this is historic buildings, historic buildings, accessory buildings, but visible from public right away?
Number of page reference on the?
I think you could dis, I, yeah, I think.
D fifty-six.
Based on everything I've heard, yeah, I don't think there's support for that one.
Number seven, B forty-six. B forty-six.
Forty-six or fifty-six? Forty-six or fifty-six?
Forty-six. Number seven. Yeah.
I think you can, yeah, I think.
On the, on the red line. If you're looking at it on the red line.
Okay. Okay, so I kind of, I heard a bunch of those.
Chris, I have a question for you, nine and ten, well, it was just discussed, you, you referenced the example of a garage or a shed. But number nine in the project type says non-residential accessory buildings, and now number ten, we're looking at residential accessory buildings. So we already have planning commission support generally on number nine. But with number ten, could it just be a parallelism issue where number ten should keep the same language of similarly not visible from the public right of way?
Yeah, so non-residential and residential buildings that are screened under five hundred square feet.
Gotcha.
Was that the intent?
Yeah, I think that was the intent, yeah. The idea is that, again, we're not, we're still trying to protect historic buildings. We're trying to think of instances where there's less reason for concern.
So one was commercial, one was residential, but then there's distinction also between visible and not visible.
Correct, so I'm, I'm looking at page D fifty-five right now.
Okay.
Okay, and at the bottom, A four. This is the item that generally everyone was just supportive of, new non-residential accessory buildings screened from adjoining public right-of-way, where the proposed building has a floor area less than or equal to five hundred square feet, et cetera.
Okay.
And then you look at section C now.
Where, same page?
Yes, on page D fifty-six. Section C, now we're talking about resident, new residential buildings. And we need to correct the numbering in this section, there should be one, two, three, four, but there's a one, one. But the, the second item there should reflect the same wording that we just read. So the wording should be changed to say, new residential accessory buildings screened from adjoining public right-of-way, continue on.
Yes, thank you, Jonathan.
Well, what about what, what about new residential accessory buildings that are visible?
Would it change?
They get kicked out for review?
I would have to add an item there.
Okay.
But if it's visible, it's still planning commission.
Okay, so what about, did we, because this is confusing, if we go to the top of that page, A five, okay, that, okay, that's process three. Visible, process three.
Five, you're adding one in between.
Got it.
I would add a line that says visible planning commissions, still.
Okay. So everyone in agreement with that?
If it's not visible.
Not visible, zoning administrator, if it's visible from the public right of way.
You're cool with that? If it's not visible, okay.
Okay, so that takes care of nine and ten, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so this is where we start getting into the staff approvals. And I'm going to say, what I've heard is that we don't want to eliminate the public notice, the public hearing of things. When you look at the code first, I'll tell you where the code is, it's D thirty-two.
D thirty-two?
D thirty-two. Actually, go to D, D thirty-four is when we start to talk about the, the types of projects that I think that there's concerns about.
Okay.
So that's where on D thirty-four and D thirty-five, there's two categories of projects, one and two. And what I'm, what staff is hearing from the planning commission is that staff shouldn't be approving those. That they should be reviewed by the zoning administrator instead. That there's more merit in that maintaining public notice and not having staff make these decisions. And, and review of what those are, again, it's like buildings across the street from a historic building, which we more or less settled earlier, that, that we, we talked through that one. We talked through the, the three hundred feet, if it's more than a hundred and twenty, it should be ZA, so we already talked about that one. The last one was additions, less than five hundred square feet, if it's adjoining a historic building. And then I think I said, uh, wait. So earlier we were talking, the only thing that we haven't talked about is if you had an addition less than five hundred square feet, and it's abutting a historic resource in the same block inside of the street, but not visible from the public right of way. of the street, but not visible from the public right of way adjoining the historic building. So let's say, let's go back to this slide here. So let's say, my, again, my cursor, the yellow arrow, and the property to the right of that in green, it's abutting it, and that project, that site, they want to do a five hundred square foot addition, and theoretically, you can't see it from the street, when you're, the street adjoining the historic building, right? So you're at the historic building and you're looking to the project and you can't see it, and it's less than five hundred square feet. We, staff had proposed, that staff approved that, and instead, um. Let me actually, sorry, I'm talking through, like, if it's zoning administrator, if the idea is that it's zoning administrator and not staff, that's not really a change, that's how the code is now, so I, I don't, what I'm hearing is, don't make it staff, keep the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
So, so I think the balance of those things, I'd like to talk about that, these are all, there's criteria built in the code, which, if you want, we can get through each of them, these are all minor changes to buildings, like materials, colors, accessory structures, like fences, it could be adding a spa to a property, windows, doors, those sort of type of minor changes, staff approves those now, right? What we're trying to do here with the balance of these changes is make it objective, so we have standards in here, defining what staff could approve, instead of having these broad categories and findings that we have, we can interpret, and there's some that are pretty broad, that really, in actuality, what we are proposing here is what we can approve today, but we're. We're, we're essentially writing out what we have been able to do, but not be able to interpret it anymore, it's, you either check the boxes or you don't.
Well, it looks pretty comprehensive.
There's a lot of text here, so.
I, I for one have some questions about some specific things.
Okay.
Run through every one, but I have some questions, I don't know about others.
But just to clarify, you're saying, right now, everything on these lists, staff can approve?
Yes, they can approve these things, yeah, like right now, a staff waiver, it says, it says minor landscape and hardscape, that's it. What we're doing is defining what that means, what, what is minor landscape? So we have criteria that if it exceeds that, staff won't be able to approve it anymore.
But this applies to nonhistoric resources?
Both, so currently, we can approve things on historic buildings, maybe if you were to search for anything that arguably, whether we could approve it or not, it would be historic buildings, but when we put this list together, we thought through, what are the types of things, if someone came in with a staff waiver for today, we would be able to make an interpretation that it does not substantially alter the visual appearance of the building or its art historical integrity, which is a broad category.
Yeah, but what you just said doesn't go along with what we're seeing here.
Correct, we're eliminating that, we would no longer have that squishy.
But yeah, but, but it says here that currently, Z A approval is required. You just said that you.
What are you looking at, Steve?
I'm looking at item eleven.
Yeah, I'm looking at one.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Oh, right here, okay.
Where it says, the current process.
Gotcha.
Existing process.
Okay.
Yeah, that's getting, that's getting into, uh. I could show you the code, there's, there's two things, there's two categories, there's one that says minor restoration of historic buildings, staff can approve, and then there's this squishy text that says. If a project does not substantially alter the visual appearance or historical integrity of a building, staff can approve it, and I've, I've approved a project for a historic building where they were making changes to historic building, that you couldn't see, right? Like, let's say someone adds a tile to a stair riser, it's not changing the historical integrity to the building.
Staff is well-trained in this area, as opposed to planning commission?
Staff is responsible for making that interpretation right now, and what we're trying to do here is avoid the interpretive nature of that language, and have it more specific on what staff can approve, so essentially, we're restraining our ability, we are eliminating this open and more, you know, broad category of projects that we can approve, because we're trying to meet state law and be objective, where we, you either check the boxes or you don't. So we have guidelines in here, we have criteria for different types of projects, and we modeled this after City of Santa Barbara, we looked at, how did they deal with these staff level approvals, I talked to their historic preservationist, and tried to understand what, like, how they tried to define what minor is, and then what we did is took their language and adjusted it for San Clemente. So my suggestion is, I don't know if we're gonna get by, by ten, but that we actually go through the language, you know, and you can tell staff, hey, maybe we shouldn't, maybe there might be criteria that you want to change, or you want to add to define when staff should approve something, I'll give you an example, so, we have a window policy in the city, it's not codified anywhere, years ago, we went to the planning commission and we find out what type of windows should the city be approving staff, if it's in architectural overlay, we had a study session on it, and we apply it, it's not in the code, now it would be in the code, it'd be held to that, so what materials could, to staff approve if it's in the downtown?
And the advantage to this is, far?
There, because staff, right now, we write up findings, we spend more time writing up paperwork and conditions of approval, and we would not be doing that as much, we wouldn't.
Or you're checking a box.
Yeah, they would fill out a form, and they either, they would give us materials, and they either meet the standards or they don't, if they meet the standards, we sign it.
Okay, so it was, so I'm just gonna use an example of the outdoor dining.
Okay.
So many color schemes, you, no cafe lights, the structure had to be similar. That kind of where you were leaning towards, is that?
Yes.
Where it was a cookie cutter?
Yeah. That's the idea, is to objectify, get consensus among the planning commission on what, what types of spas are minor enough for staff to approve, if it's not, if you don't, if they're, like, right now, we say, you can add a spa on a historic site in the, where you can't see it, it's behind the building, and it's detached, and it has to be over hardscape, and we said that because we don't want to damage, have any potential for removing, like landscaping, that might be important or something, so we try to, like, spill out all these parameters that would restrain our ability to approve something based on what is minor.
Everything in section seventeen sixteen zero nine five is process one.
Yes. So we're not proposing to change the level of review, we're proposing to meet state law by making things objective. And, again, not sound like a broken record, but streamlining in the sense of every minute that we don't spend writing things is a form of streamlining, because we can now spend time reviewing a project that goes before the planning commission.
Well, it's also good, because you can just give this, you know, people to see and say, here's the standards, right? Instead of you kind of having to explain it each time, oh, okay, I'll do this and that, okay, cool.
Yeah.
So I'm just, I guess, the list here, right, one through twenty-six, so which one's our staff approval?
They're all staff approval, except one and, one and two, I just heard from the commission, there's not support for one and two.
Yes, one and two.
So one and two are new things that we can't do now.
Yeah.
We can't do those.
What about, yeah, I agree, we shouldn't, I don't want to do, what about four?
Uh, four, we can do four.
Now?
Yeah, and, you know, if there's. If, if the commission would like, we can show you what the code looks like now, and you can compare.
What about eighteen?
Eighteen? Eighteen.
New residential buildings location limited.
Uh, wait, I'm not, eighteen, I have roofs.
Oh.
Your, your summary sheet is not, is not jiving with what's the actual.
Roof is twenty on my sheet.
Yeah, but.
Dash.
I'm looking here, I don't see that, I think that probably got scratched. There's nowhere near.
Oh, it's not matching the.
One has twenty-six items and.
One has twenty-five, yeah.
Same thing with the final, the G.
I tried to show only the numbers that apply to nonhistoric building, you know, like, I cut out the ones that, that you are not able to do with historic buildings, like, that's, like, if you look on the next page, see how it jumps to four right away? Because you can even do one through three on a historic building. So, which, which is the item that you want to talk about?
It would be new residential buildings location limited, that is.
That's actually two.
It's actually not on your.
It's one.
Not on yours. Yeah, maybe you scratched it already.
Yeah, that's, that's a mistake.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
Which we're scratching anyway, we're scratching number one.
Yeah, we're not doing number eighteen, or one and two.
So when I, I've had offline conversations with Larry and Wayne, they were concerned about, number would be thirteen on our sheet, and it would be thirteen on yours. And fourteen, yes, landscape changes, especially tree removals.
Okay.
Because that's gonna, that could change the character of that property. Yeah.
Okay, well, then, my, my suggestion is defining what type of fences and what type of landscaping staff should approve versus no land, because right now, I think we can all agree, staff should be able to approve one shrub, right? Should staff be able to approve that? And the architectural overlay? And can we approve a fence that matches the building? So that, that's what we're trying to do, is define what type of fences, what type of landscaping is minor. That's the.
Well, when, when that comes, do you, you pay attention to the string, string line and all that?
There's no string line for fences, no, no, there's line of sight things, right? So if, if a fence, like, like, if there's a fence that may have a concern with line of sight for vehicles, yeah, we, our engineering staff would have a say in that, yeah.
I, I have a few specific questions about some of these.
Okay, okay, because there, there are these lists of standards, and I don't, I don't know if that's something we should plow through, or should we kick that to design review, and sit down with interested people and just go through these standards, and then get consensus, and then once that's done, bring it back.
Because it doesn't really give us that right here.
No, it's too much, yeah.
Well, I mean, I read.
Five till ten, there's no way we're gonna.
This is all new.
I mean, I think we do need to go through each one and create some levels. Landscape is a perfect example.
Staff would rather continue to meet with the full commission, and continue the meetings as needed to go through this, so that we don't have a subset of the planning commission where there may be some varying opinion later.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, how you're all productive, right?
I think we'd rather have more hearings than change the type of meeting.
Can I ask my questions, I'll just take a minute, about some of the specific things, and then see what your response, and maybe that gets incorporated into a future version. Number five, awnings, it says small canvas awnings over windows?
Yes.
What about metal awnings, what about other, you know, materials besides, yeah, why, why?
I, I opened, I opened to that, yeah, it, we, we, we played it conservative, you know, but I think that when it comes to something like Los Molinos, for example, sure, you know, metal awnings is actually in the design guideline, so we should talk about it.
Both of my neighbors have metal awnings.
Um, if it's Spanish colonial, it shouldn't be metal.
Is this only, is this only applicable to Spanish colonial?
No, so that's what I mean is, if it's not Spanish colonial, or some form of traditional Spanish design, then I could see like a nonresidential building, where maybe the commission would be open to staff approving a metal awning, but I, I don't have it in here, so.
Well, or a residential building that's not Spanish colonial?
Correct.
Right.
Correct, yeah, and we could say that, you know, if it's not Spanish, a form of traditional Spanish design, then these other materials are appropriate.
And this is not historical structures?
No, this is any.
It, yeah, in each, in each one of these, we have a bullet on historic buildings and how they differ.
Okay.
So like, for awnings, I don't have that in here for historic buildings, because sometimes people want to add awnings, and it doesn't.
I just didn't notice that in the actual standards, where. Did, am I, oh, for, like chimneys and metal flues, A, six A, for city-designated historical research landmark list, project is limited to repairing or altering, okay, so you do, you do call that out?
We do, and maybe you want something like that for awnings also, and we could add that.
So maybe, that's our next meeting, is to walk through those.
Yeah, I just, I just want to get these out before I forget, and. Number nineteen, sheds, it says sheds and spas, I think it should say sheds or spas.
Oh, I thought I changed that.
Well, maybe you did, I'm, I'm.
On ours, it says and, on his, it still says and.
Well, I'm looking at, I, this is.
Is that the old version?
This is the old version.
Yeah, I changed it.
Okay.
I heard that, I heard of that, so I changed it. That one's done.
Okay, and then, skylights, it says, there are no more than three skylights proposed for a building. Why? Seems like skylights are pro-energy-saving and Title twenty-four stuff, why are we restricting the number of skylights?
It's more of what can staff approve, so if, if, if planning commission's okay with more than three, then let's put more than three, we are just trying, we, staff was trying to, like, anticipate what you would think is minor.
Okay.
And now we're here, and you tell us if we're wrong. That's, that's, that's why, that's why we need to go through all this stuff, because what I'm, what I envisioned is exactly this, only two, yeah, so we need to hear that from you.
Okay, okay, those are my items, okay, are we ready for a continuance?
Let me just ask one question. We had a historic project where a significant part of the residence was the view out of the back of it, where you walked into the house, this was maybe eight years ago, ten years ago.
Okay.
And the guy next door. And the guy next door was talking about doing a not visible from the street structure, but it was going to impact the view and we don't protect views. Would that get kicked up automatically by, I don't know, is there a trigger that would? Because you, you do say kind of securely the, uh, significant character of the building, the historic building, as long as it doesn't impact that.
Yes.
That be considered? So keep that in mind.
Yeah, I mean, a big thing now is we've heard staff want to be approving additions, right? Like, we're not going to be doing the, the massive things anymore. It would be like a fence and we can do that today. But we have guidelines in there that we would have to meet for historic preservation.
Because that's the adjacent property.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we try to, yeah. And you can tell us if you like the wording.
Okay, so any suggestions, staff, on when we should continue this item till? If that's the will of the commission?
Um, my, my thought is if staff, um, we would prefer to collect all your comments before we rewrite all these things and re-present them. So if it's a matter of taking the material before you and I'm going to clean up some of the numbering and all that, um, to make sure it's right, and then we'll reprint it, I think I could do that in the next meeting. Does that sound? Okay?
So you are incorporating this bunch of the stuff we discussed?
No, I would not be making all these changes by the next meeting. Instead, I, I propose that we finish going through everything.
Okay.
And then I update the ordinance as a whole because there, there, things are intertwined.
Right, sure.
Um, but in the meantime, like, we found there's some, like, number eighteen on this sheet was incorrect. I'm going to make sure this, this is accurate. That won't take me a lot of time to, to get it to you. And maybe I just, we just, um, provide that for you. So I would suggest not keeping your materials, suggest keeping your materials. And, um, if there's something that we can, it'll probably be an update to, um, attachment to.
Okay, so keep our packet.
Yes, I would keep your packet, yeah.
I'll give you the other stuff and then we'll.
I may, I may like have a memo report to you that, um, but I would, the, uh, the materials, I think you can keep and.
We'll just keep working off this pack.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're looking for, for a continuance to the twenty-second, is that accurate?
Correct, yes.
And that, that agenda's not particularly overloaded with stuff?
It's not, we have one item on that agenda and it's not a particularly, um, concerning item, so I, if it's correct, it's a conversion of existing space that'll be coming in front of you, uh, at that item, uh, or at that meeting. Uh, they're not, no. It's internal changes only. So the twenty-second would be a workable meeting.
Okay, so I'm op- open to a motion to continue this item to the twenty-second. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. I'm open to a motion to, is there any other commissioner comments or staff comments or reports or anything? We, we can. We can.
What do you think about that, Jonathan and Cecilia? Is there a three-ring binder code book?
There's not currently. We could, uh, request to get some of those printed. Um, it might take a little bit of time to fulfill that request. So if you're interested, I, I'd say let's start by, uh, please communicate to me if you'd like a printed version uh, of that, um, and, and we will be in communication about, uh, a timeline to get that into your hands.
So this is kind of semi-related, but I just go throw it out here, it'd be cool if we had like monitors up here and, and you could just pull the code up on the screen. And I guess we have them there, but sometimes it interferes with your presentation.
Yeah, that's a great request as well. Cecilia, do you know if, um, that's something that we could address with IT?
Yeah, my understanding is that the audio visual that is in the chambers now is temporary. Um, there is equipment that IT ordered, but it wasn't available in time um, for the opening of the chamber. So it'll be coming shortly and, uh, I shouldn't say shortly, I don't know when it's coming, but it's coming. And all of what you see, including the monitors out there, that the public views, um, will be changed out. These microphones aren't the permanent microphones, so.
Well, you, you might, you know, maybe it's worth investigating, will that new technology, would it allow us to have the codes right in front of us, you know, just online, so? Okay, awesome. I'm motion, open to a motion to adjourn.
I've actually got a new business item.
Okay.
Um, attended the car show last week. Um, exiting it, uh, they were not controlling the noise like we.
I saw the same thing.
They could. Coming out of the parking lot sitting at the light before they left the site, they were revving engines, engines and whatnot and no attempt to quiet them down. So I think, uh, we need code compliance to put them on notice that, uh, they need to step it up. Hold the noise.
I went by it also and I saw none of the event staff at the Chick-fil-A exit, like, no one was.
That's where the noise I'm talking about was.
No one was even there. There were no volunteers at that exit when I went by.
Do you mind if I ask, do you know what time about that was when those observations were made?
See, I got there with the boys, uh, it was probably about ten twenty.
Okay.
A little earlier than that.
Okay, thank you. Now, I, as far as next steps, I'll communicate directly to the operator as well as to code enforcement about those concerns.
Okay. I move that we adjourn this meeting to the next meeting on March twenty-second at six P M.
Second up? Can I, before we vote on it, would it be advantageous if we moved, I don't know if it screws everything up to five so we can have more time on this? Or is that messing?
I know, it says that we have the progress report on the.
Oh, track it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe we're going to be pushing that, uh, the study session back. So the agenda will be coming out shortly, um, for, for that item. But our IT team is not quite ready to, um, have those implementation demonstrations done. So Christopher's going to be bringing that at, uh, we're, we're looking at the first meeting in April for that, uh, demonstration. So we likely won't have a study session.
So we could start at five?
We could.
I don't know, does that mess things up?
Does it kind of mess things up given different time?
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, that's the commissioners, huh?
Well, I mean, just the problem is they get used to the.
Yeah, the six P M. My personal feeling is leave it alone, and I think we're doing really well. Like, I think now we know what we're doing, we know how we're attacking it, just keep going.
Okay.
I think we're fine, but that's my vote out of seven. Yes, no?
No, I'm okay with that.
Okay, then I stick with my motion to continue at six P M on the twenty-second.
Sounds good.
Was there a second?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.